It says it's a webinar. I did not turn it on, but it says the webinar is now streaming live on YouTube. And we are the Zoom. Is operational.
So we'll wait a few minutes for.
I think it's a Ms. Hines is going to be a few minutes late. She said seven oh five, seven ten latest, but I do think it'd be appropriate ahead to go ahead and get started.
Okay. All right. Do you have things? You have things for us? Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the October thirteenth meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. Calling to. Roll call, member hair, commission member Henness.
Yeah.
And commission member Hines will be coming in a bit late. Commission member Lucas is not here. Commission member Whitmore.
Here.
And McLaughlin is here. Please bear with me as I read the required litany here. Please take notice that the October thirteenth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting will be held by electronic means pursuant to continuity of government resolution effective on October sixth, twenty twenty one. Due to the threats posed by the COVID nineteen pandemic to the health, safety and welfare of the public. While some commission members may participate remotely, staff will be present presenting normally in the Board of Supervisors meeting room at one fifty South Main Street. Lexington at two four four five zero. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or to participate. And we'll do our best to take citizen comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. Blank is the link is available on the county website. Copy into the address line on your browser. Two, you could join by telephone. You may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel. Also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. And you can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window, or you can press star nine if you're calling by telephone. And at this time, we'll move on with the meeting. First of all, are there any citizen comments on anything that are that is not on the agenda for tonight? Please come forward and state your name and address.
James Panda Becker, four four five Arnold's Valley Road, Natural Bridge Station.
Panda Becker.
Thank you. Imagine yourself on a Sunday afternoon with some visitors from out of town who trying to figure out what to do. And one of you says, hey, I hear there's a group of artists and craft studios on the county. Let's go visit those. Wouldn't that wouldn't that be nice? Lots of counties that can do that. Well, we've discovered that's not. Available in this county in the A two and AT. Districts. I'm with Thunder Bridge Campground LLC. You all previously approved us having that kind of activity for our campers. But if you live off the campus, not staying there overnight, you're not allowed to come to see our. Studios according to the planning department, what we've been doing. As we've looked through the ordinance to try to find alternatives. So we came up with the idea of changing the cultural music center. Special exception, which sounds like it might work, cultural music center, except that it's focused on music. Just a few tweaks would make it available for arts and craft studios, not just at Thunder Bridge, but at say Hartstone. Hartstone Lodge. So I've said, I've sent you guys a memo, which you probably seen, I could read that, but I guess I won't. You all have it, right?
Yes.
I'm naive, perhaps to think you could possibly decide right now that that's great. Let's let's recommend that to the Board of Supervisors. But if that's not possible, how about assuring me that it would be on next month's agenda? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benavac. Any discussion about that?
No.
Staff, I think we would ask that you all look into this to see if it's possibility would probably be have to be open to the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Any any proposed zoning to text, any proposed zoning text of this amendment can be initiated. By motion of the taken to a public hearing by motion of the Planning Commission or a resolution by the Board of Supervisors, and it does require a public hearing.
Okay. So if we can look at that in either next month or the month after.
Certainly, we think it's achievable to put it on next month's agenda.
All right. Are there any other comments from anybody on anything on tonight's agenda? Okay, do we have anybody on written? Are there any written comments or anybody on via Zoom or?
We did not receive any written comments.
No, no one has their hands up and there are no open question and answers and no chats or no sir.
Okay, so we'll close that section and move on to the approval of the September eighth minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor.
Hi.
All right, motion, motion passes. Board of Supervisor report.
Yes, yes. At the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one meeting, the board had four action items based on y'all's recommendation. The first one was a down zoning of the Hidden Valley Farm Incorporated, approximately nine point seven five acres from the industrial zoning district to the agricultural zoning district that was approved. Without proffers, a straight rezoning, straight down zoning. Mr. Joseph Behrs Bed and Breakfast Home Stay in a residential district was approved as your recommendation. Sunset Farms LLC also on Colliers Town Road was Lod Resort, and that was approved with the conditions as proposed by the Planning Commission. Lastly, Rockbridge County Woodyard Zoning Text Amendment. That was passed back to the board of the Board of Supervisors made a motion to put it back to the planning commission for further consideration of items that will be reviewed on the actual agenda item. Okay, that was all the action items pertaining to the planning and zoning department.
Okay, now we go on to the JBLN Investment LLC at Thoroughbred Circle.
Can I think since Kimberly is not here that we should skip that because I can't vote on it and I don't believe we can do anything with two people.
We still have a quorum and very well, I think Kimball said sometime here shortly.
I just wondered if we could skip down and do maybe Heather and Mike needs, you know, just do one before and then come back just to give her time to get in and get situated.
I'm okay with that.
I have to recuse myself from those. I feel like we need more.
Okay. So we'll move on down to item number eight, Heather and Mike Meads at one twenty six Autumn Ridge Lane. Application for special exception permit to operate a lodge or resort in the. A two zoning district.
Have a very poor, very brief PowerPoint presentation and I will turn it over to the owner of the project, Mr. Mike Beads is in attendance. With that being said. All right, this is the Autumn Ridge LLC special exception for a lodge resort. The property is located on the east side of Old Farm Road, accessed by Autumn Ridge Lane, a private road owned by Autumn Ridge Cottages LLC. Tax map number is seventy five dash twelve dash seven B and consists of thirty nine point three three acres per tax records. Currently operating as a bed and breakfast in with three dwellings used for short term rentals. The special exception itself, Heather and Mike Meads, owner of the property, have applied for a special exception permit to operate a lodge and resort in the A two zoning district. That's the agricultural and general use zoning district. Per section six oh three point oh three dash one of the land development regulations, lodge or resorts are used by special exception in the A two zoning district. The applicant has proposed to renovate a barn into a barn accessory structure into a single family dwelling for a fourth short term rental unit. Doing so would require a special exception permit per sections three oh two point one eight two of as a lodge or resort. The barn was used as a yoga studio and currently supplied with water, sewer and electric. For discussion purposes, draft staff has drafted the following conditions that that could be used for the special exception permit. Number one would be substantial compliance with the site map dated October eighth, twenty twenty one. That is included in your package. And and that is just a simple GIS map showing the three existing short term rentals and then the location of the fourth. Accessory structure that's at the very end of the road. That is the last structure that that is shown on your your map there, excuse me. Rental units shall be used for short term rental only. And number three approval is contingent on building apartment, county building apartment, erosion sediment control, stormwater management, Virginia Department of Transportation and Public Service Authority. Excuse me, in this case, it's actually going to be not the public source, the service authority, but Health Department approvals. With that, I'd like to stop sharing the screen and turn this portion of the presentation over to Mike, Mr. Mike Beats.
Mike needs, I brought my daughter Leah, she wanted to come. The barn, as you saw, we had renovated that. Twenty eighteen for goat yoga. So we'd gotten permission from Mr. Krickenberger to have goat yoga and then we did that for a year or so until, you know, COVID came along. So we've already run power and water and put in a septic for three to five bedrooms. You know, for the barn. So we we don't do big events. The barn, the cabins that are on the property have been there since I think the first one was built maybe in nineteen ninety eight. And then every two years they built, built ones. There's three total. They are two person cabins, little probably a little under a thousand square feet. We don't do any kind of parties, weddings or any kind of things with heavy traffic like that. So this would. We were grandfathered in for three units. And so this is just bringing a fourth unit online on in the existing barn that's there. We'd renovate the downstairs of the barn. To ADA compliance, we already had to have the ADA compliant bathroom and things like that for the goat yoga. That's that's really what we're talking about doing.
Do you have any future plans to expand more units?
That's a good question. This would allow, so it's thirty nine acres plus or minus this would this this designation, as I understand, it would allow four to nine. You know, have you gone up to nine units, but I don't think the property could have that many. We don't have the wherewithal to build another, you know, unit from the ground up. At this time, and so, no, we don't have any plans to do that. Would we add a fifth unit at some point down the road? Just on that, but it's just very expensive to do. Renovating the barns, you know, I'm not sure we'd even tackle this if we hadn't already. Gone to the expense of running power and water. There was no power to the barn or water, anything we want property. So since we already had that in place, we thought, you know, we could, you know, attempt to renovate it and get it usable.
You have a question? Okay, thank you, and we'll now open up the the public hearing. And if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name, magistrate or district. And we will be asking people to limit their comments to three minutes or under. Tonight, so please keep that in mind. And if you haven't already done so, if you would make sure that cell phones are in a in a mode where they won't disrupt, that would be. Appropriate. Okay, so. We're open for the public hearing. Is there, there's nobody physically here?
There's no one signed up to speak.
Any online?
There are, if you're, if you're online and you'd like to speak, just please raise your hand, use your raise hand button now. And we can unmute you. We do have three attendees. While that while given that option of raising hand, I'll check the, there are no open questions. And there are no open chats. Let me go back to the attendees. No one, no one has raised their hands. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Do you have something?
Yes, I have one, one comment is is draft, the draft conditions for for discussion purposes include substantial compliance with the site plan dated October eighth, twenty twenty one. That is the map that's shown in y'all's. The 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 package there rentals should be used for short term rental only, and of course, approval contingent on building department, ENS, VDOT and Health Department. With that first substantial compliance that will dictate, Mr. Bees is exactly correct, as a lodge resort destination, you can have your main lodge, which is consist of twenty four or less units. And then you can have up to eight accessory, accessory units that may have cooking facilities provided in them. Again, that's a special exception we're working on now with with the substantial compliance with the site plan. Excuse me, site map dated October eighth, again, in your package, that would limit the this particular application for the fourth unit. And so if that is a condition associated with it, that it would be, it would require modifications to it to add a fifth unit, six, seven, eight.
That was, that was a question I had for you. Okay, thank you. You answered my question. Any other comments? Besides, thank you for for being here.
We had given the heads up adult, we skipped three of them already, so don't, don't, don't think we got through them that quickly.
Okay.
Questions, they did a great job and, you know, took care of all the questions I had with their presentation.
Motion.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Planning Commission recommended the Board of Supervisors that the special exception permit to develop and operate a lodge in the agricultural general A two district. For LDR section six zero three point zero three dash one and one two six Autumn Ridge Lane identified as tax map number seventy five dash twelve dash seven B. Be approved with following conditions, one substantial compliance with the site map dated October eighth, twenty twenty one, two rental units should be used for short term rental only. Three approval is contingent on county building department erosion and sediment control, stormwater management, Virginia Department of Transportation and Public Service Authority, Health Department approvals.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on back in the agenda to items number five. JBLN Investment LLC, Thoroughbred Circle. Does anyone else you have something you need to?
I hereby abstain from all matters discussions or voting related to the application for a proper amendment on tax map number sixty two dash thirty three dash twenty two. I JBL and investments in my disclosure statement required under the Conflicts of Interest Act is on file with the Secretary of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
All right, in attendance this evening, we have Mr. Brazel Hammerick, the owner, co-owner of the owner of this particular property, JBNL Investment and the engineer on the property. With that being said, I do have a brief PowerPoint that I'd like to share. Before I turn the floor over to Mr. Hammerick. All right, again, JBNL Investments LLC, this is a proper amendment process located on the east side of Thoroughbred Circle. Thoroughbred Circle is currently a private road. I have been, we have been working with Mr. Hammerick with and VDOT to make the last strides of having this road accepted into the VDOT system. And and Mr. Hammerick's been having a pile of work done with different agencies, but Dominion Power being one, Columbia Gas being the other on on some documentation that's required to to have the road taken over by the state. Tax map number sixty two dash thirty three dash two owned by JBNL Investments LLC, and it currently consists of six eight point six zero eight acres per tax records conditionally rezoned to R two. Most recently rezoned January twenty twenty one with proffered conditions. So the proffer amendment that's under consideration this evening is the current proffered conditions require substantial compliance with a site plan dated January with last revision date of January twelfth, twenty twenty one. It included twenty five lots for single family dwelling. The proposed plan that's dated latest date of September fifteenth, twenty twenty one changes the twenty five single family dwellings into twenty seven lots with a total of five. Two family dwellings, which would be considered duplex and seventeen single family dwellings. The proposed, the proposed plan made changes only to the lot served by Triple Crown Lane. There's no change in the total acreage, open space, external property lines, therefore staff felt like the previously approved cluster subdivision was not necessarily for re-review. So starting out with the original or the January twelfth, twenty twenty one rezoning plan, just to use my cursor here. In fact, I'm going to use the laser pointer here. If you can see. The screen's a little bit below, so this portion of Thoroughbred Circle is actually a publicly maintained road, and then you hit this portion, and that's where it turns private. So with that being said, the access to the to the proposed development is off of Thoroughbred Circle with the first entrance being located to this. Both entrances is south of existing Thoroughbred Circle. The first interest is to serve a total of. Thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen town home projects, and that has been consistent from the last plan to this current plan, the January plan to the to the current plan. And in fact, we're still reviewing the January plan, I apologize. But then, as you see, the the second access is Triple Crown Lane that that was serving twenty five single family dwellings. So again, this was the January twelfth, twenty twenty one rezoning plan. What is in front of us this evening is a second proffered plan, proposed date with September fifteenth, twenty twenty one. So you'll see that the town home projects, it's exactly the same, the layout, but Triple Crown Lane does have some modifications to the road network itself. Originally was proposed for for eighteen foot wide road through negotiation with VDOT that has been that has been increased with twenty two feet wide. And then rather than twenty five single family dwellings, we're talking about revising that proffered plan, going through the process now revising that proffered plan to include seventeen single family dwellings. And five duplex lots, so going through the duplex lots, there are three on the south side of Triple Crown Rain, very at the very beginning. Then it turns into single family development here, and then at the very end of the cul-de-sac to the south side here, there's a duplex lot. And to the north side, there's, there's another duplex lot. And of course, that the duplexes would be split down the middle. With that, this, this is a proffered plan, so I'll leave this up on the screen for Mr. Hammerick to use. Come up and review any additional details or answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
Hey, Chris, my name's Brazel Hammerick, one fifty six Laurel Hill Road, Verona, Virginia. Just a couple of things of in terms of getting third red circle into the state system. I think we're down to eight thousand dollars. Columbia Gas wants six thousand dollars to shuffle some papers. And Dominion told me today they want two thousand dollars to shovel similar papers, so. Once they get their money and they shuffle some more, I believe Alvin will probably come to the Board of Supervisors and. Recommend the resolution and then I'll have to pay a little bit more money to beat up and post some bonds. A year from now, maybe we'll be home. Just to bring you up to date on that. And then everything is, as Chris said, I will just say one thing, rather than the road being twenty two feet, it's actually twenty four feet. Which is the same width as what thoroughbred circle is. Y'all's fire chief. When we went through the process. According to VDOT's regulations, I can do everything with what I was trying to do there with an eighteen foot road. We met with the fire chief, he felt like he wanted twenty two feet. Then VDOT, I don't know whether it was so much of a negotiation. Maybe more of a mandate. Anyway, it went to twenty four feet. Your fire chief was okay with a thirty foot diameter cul-de-sac. VDOT demanded a forty five foot cul-de-sac. And that is basically to support a school bus and talking to your school transportation person. They'll not go down in there unless they're absolutely made to, but if Mr. Smith says, hey, you got to come pick Johnny up. They have to, and the forty five foot will allow the school bus to completely. So what does that mean? It's just, I had to cave to make it work. It, it's a bunch of money. It it almost messed, well, it actually probably renders one of the lots useless for a standalone, single family. But people have been. Inquiring about duplexes a bunch over the years, so I thought to myself with that, if I put a duplex here, I can make, I can recover this lot. And then I thought, well, while I'm doing that, I might as well just kind of strategically play some others. I think I can aesthetically tastefully do that and intermingled in with the single family and. That's the purpose of going to the twenty seven losses is try to get me back to where I needed to be to make it all worthwhile. So hopefully you all can see your way forward to approve this this evening.
Everything looks really good out there, by the way.
Thank you.
Things look good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammerick? Okay, so thank you, Mr. Hammerick. We'll now open up the public hearing.
Yes, bear with me, I'm gonna stop sharing here.
Anybody physically present?
No one is signed up. Raising hands when we go through the chats here, there are no open question and answers, there are no chats. And if you would like to make a comment on the JBNL Investment LLC via Zoom, I would ask you to raise your hand now. Few minutes or a few seconds rather. Seeing no, no one raised hands, we have not received any written comments, we have not received any email comments. We do not have a open chats or question or that.
Okay, with that said, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing on this matter, bring it back to the commission. I think the changes are all very reasonable and actually makes a lot of sense what what he did. Things look in very good shape out there, quite honestly.
There's no intentions of, no intentions of taking Triple Crown Lane and extending across interconnecting with the. Single family dwellings or whatever these are.
The town. No, 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 ma'am.
Okay.
And that is consistent of the previously January twelfth, I believe it was.
Comparing.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions?
Other than that, I see it's, it's a pretty, pretty self-explanatory change.
Okay, ready for a motion?
I can make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion, the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors the proper amendment for twenty five lots for a single family dwelling to twenty seven lots. For five duplex dwellings and seventeen detached, single family dwellings on the property owned by JBLN Investment Tax Map Number sixty two dash thirty three dash twenty two be approved.
Have a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Question carries. Thank you. Okay, so moving next, we'll go into the AKB Development along Third Red Circle.
Yes, separate, separate public hearings, similar, similar air. Yes, separate, separate public hearings, similar, similar area. With that, I would like to share my screen.
So I need to make a statement. I hereby abstain from all matters discussions or voting related to the application for a proper amendment to remove proffered conditions on tax map number sixty-two dash A dash forty-five by AKB Development LLC. My disclosure statement required under the Conflict of Interest Act is on file with the Secretary of the Planning Commission.
Okay, Chris.
All right, bear with me here, let me, let this catch up with me. Again, this is AKB Development LLC, this is a, another proffer amendments associated with it. This one is located on the north side of the private portion of thoroughbred circle. Tax map number sixty-two dash A dash forty-five, property is owned by AKB Development LLC. The total property consists of thirty-two, the total parcel size is thirty-two point zero four seven per tax records and is conditionally rezoned to R2. The rezoning that we're discussing tonight is, was done in February of two thousand nine with a proffered plan to develop five multi-unit dwell, dwelling units with eight units each, so a total of forty apartment buildings. The rezoning in front of us this evening is a proffer amendment, it's a proposal for a removal of the associated prop, the associated proffers associated with a four point three five acre portion of the property. Contract purchaser plans to develop a fifteen point six two one acre portion. Here, something's going online, I think I just dropped Zoom. And I think we're still going, something's going on my end, but we'll see what it does. Again, the contract purchaser plans to develop a fifteen point six two one acre portion of the property for a thirty-five lot cluster subdivision for single-family dwellings. The current action item is only for the removal for the proffered conditions associated with the original rezoning of the four point three five acres. The, depending on the outcome of this application, a review of the cluster subdivision will follow after. And so looking at the what's going on here, bear with me here. So Chris, can you tell if we're still on? Zoom? All right, so I have been kicked off Zoom, I believe. I'm gone, so that is par for the course for today, bear with me here and I'll get back on. That way I can continue to share my screen. No, I think I can get it, let's see what it does. Bear with me, it's connecting on my end, give me, give me a few minutes. And we can probably continue while this is going on. So in your package, apologize for the technical difficulties. In your package, you do have the original February of two thousand nine rezoning proffered plan that shows the location of the eight, I'm sorry, five eight-unit apartment complexes. And so what the proposal is, is to remove, remove the associated proffers with the four point three five acres in order to continue, in order to continue the, this, continue the development of single-family dwellings in the area. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Brazel Hammack, that won't have the luxury of my PowerPoint because it says I'm unable to connect, but I'm gonna hide in the corner over here and see if I can fix that.
Chris, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, Brazel Hammer, one fifty-six Laurel Hill Road, Verona. I'm one of the three partners of AKB. The original, one of the, we've all been original partners, but one of the partners that wasn't an apartment person is now deceased, so that plan just never really got off the, off the drawing board, but and I actually kind of forgotten about it, to be honest, hadn't really forgotten about it, but I thought maybe the world had forgotten about it. Mr. Chris over here, no, 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 he politely reminded me that we had some business to take care of. So basically it's just removing that so that we can support a thirty-six lot of a single-family development that is identical to what you see out there right now.
You guys have it in your packet too, and I was just counting up, so instead of having forty units, basically you've got sixteen.
You gotta be quiet.
I'm back up and running if needed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hammer, I'm with our pack. So I think what we can do now, Chris, do you want to add anything as far as?
No, if the planning commission or anyone in the, if needed, I can certainly review the, the current proffered plan if we have any specific comments or.
If we do, during the public hearing, if we need to, you can get there. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for remover, removal of these proffers. Is there anybody present that would like to speak?
There's no one signed up, we don't recognize anyone at this time. Seeing anyone, let me go back to my Zoom, there are no hands raised, so if anyone would like to speak on the AKB public hearing, now would be the appropriate time to raise your hand. With that being said, there are no open questions and there are no open chats and no one has raised their hand. With that, we will, I'll turn back over to the chair.
Okay, and at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this matter, bring you back to the committee. Question I have, Chris, for you is when this was planning zoning was with the neighborhood, were there any comments from anybody in the neighborhood regarding this? Just questions asked.
As far as, as far as the current public hearing go, the current process we're in or the previous process?
Just no, on, on, on the removal of the apartments.
We did receive several many phone calls, inquiries about the, about this particular rezoning and the last, but, but with this particular one, the, the biggest common concern that we heard was that they were doing apartment building. So, so just about everyone that I spoke with was, was relieved that was going from multifamily apartments to single-family dwelling, of course, single-family dwelling is consistent with the majority of the development in the area.
Okay. Thank you, that was. All right, are there any other questions or comments with discussion within the commission?
No, I think you asked my question about the development, taking it away versus keeping it, so.
All right. Motion?
I make a motion, I make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors that the proffer amendment to remove proffered conditions on property owned by AKB Development LLC tax map number sixty-two dash A dash forty-five be approved.
We have a motion?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. So that takes us now to item number seven, AKB Development on this cluster subdivision, and this is not a public hearing, this is a site review.
That is correct, this is not a public hearing to go for it, yes ma'am.
Before we do that, we need to have Ms. Hennes.
Yes, I hereby abstain from all matters discussions or voting related to the application for cluster subdivision review on tax map number sixty-two dash A dash forty-five by AKB Development LLC and my disclosure statement required under the Conflict of Interest Act is on file with the Secretary of the Planning Commission.
All right, on this particular one, I'm going to skip directly to the last slide that shows the proposed cluster subdivision. AKB Development LLC has submitted a subdivision plat for a thirty-five lot cluster subdivision in the mixed residential R2 zoning district. Property is located on the north side of the road on the privately owned portion of thoroughbred circle, approximately point four miles from the intersection of thoroughbred circle and Valley Pike. Further identified as tax map number, parent parcel, of course, is sixty-two dash A dash forty-five. Property is owned by AKB Development LLC. The total property consists of thirty-two point zero four acres per tax records. The proposed development that is shown on the screen, which I will outline now, is this property associated with the total property, which is outlined here with the laser pointer, goes around the existing townhomes and back around here to the point of beginning. That portion of the, of the thirty-two point zero four acres is a total of fifteen point six two one acres of the total subdivided area. The approval of a cluster subdivision is contingent on the successful outcome of the rezoning tax amendment that of course has been passed along to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Per section seven twelve point oh two dash one, quote, "The implementation and approval of the cluster subdivision and open space preservation shall be done administratively by the Director of Community Development and without public hearing. In exercising her, his or her authority pursuant to this section, the Director of Community Development may consult and consider recommendation of the planning commission. Historically, staff has reviewed the cluster subdivision with the commission and received input. Again, the total development size in this particular cluster subdivision is sixteen point six two one acres with a required total of three point nine acres of open space. The proposed setbacks for the cluster subdivision are twenty-five-foot front, eight-foot sides and twenty-foot rear. And this is of course only the internal property lines that are associated with these reduced setbacks. These setbacks are consistent with the existing development in the area. In addition to the successful outcome of the proper amendment application, road plans will be required to be submitted to VDOT, a bond and/or letter of credit for the construction will be required prior to administrative approval of the plat. With that, I'll leave this plat, the plat showing the thirty-five lots, of course, thoroughbred circles here. This is the very, the northern edge, if you will, of the circle. And then the proposed road to go up here to serve X number of lots. And then this is considered C biscuit court, both, both terminate, terminate and a cul-de-sac. In this particular plan, we started off the bat with the twenty-four-foot wide road with the forty-five-foot total cul-de-sac radiuses. With that, I do think it'd be appropriate to turn it over to the developer, part owner and developer of the property, Mr. Brazel Hammer.
Mr. Hammer, you don't have to give your address again, we're good.
I was wondering about that. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, like I say, it's, it's identical pretty much to what you see.
Where are the open spaces in, in this? Is that, that would be those gray shaded areas? Okay, are they gonna be left wild or are they gonna be?
Pretty much just like what you see in.
Okay. There's not gonna be motor, motor.
No amenities in terms of playgrounds or anything like that.
All right. What you've done up there already, I think, is, is what this area needs as far as single-family homes. I'm glad this came through and I like this better than the apartments personally, but that's, that's just me. Anybody else have any questions or comments? And we, we don't need to make a motion, this is, is there a motion that needs?
There is no motion required. No, no, there's no motion required, just received input from, from the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, I think if, if this is, do this the way you've done everything else, it's gonna be.
It'll look good.
Good, thank you. Okay, I was already done number eight, so now we're to Michael here, Weatherly. The three forty Echo Adessa Lane Public Hearing for application special exception permit to operate a special events venue in the Ag General A2 zoning district.
Yes, bear with me here, now we'll share my screen, I have a PowerPoint. So I'm not thrown off yet, but I'm holding my breath on that, bear with me here. Right, this is a special exception permit for, for Echo Adesso, special exception for a special event venue. Property is on, located on the east side of Borden Grant Trail, the parcels identified as sixty-four dash fifteen dash B and sixty-four dash fifteen dash B one are owned by Five C Development Innovations LLC and consist of a combined total of one hundred and forty-three point zero two three acres total per tax records. The LLC owns additional acreage to the east that consists of one hundred and eighty-eight point eight seven seven acres per tax records. The additional acreage to the east is under open space easement with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation, VOF, but the total acreage of holdings on this side of the road is a total acreage of three hundred and thirty-three point two point zero nine acres. The property is, and that's of course per tax records, the property is currently being utilized as a farm winery. Per the special exception itself, Michael and Sierra Weatherly have made an application to, for a special exception to operate special events venue in the agricultural and general use area zoning districts, that's the A2 zoning district. Per section six oh three point oh three dash twenty-four of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, special events are a use by special exception in the A2 zonings. Applicants are currently building an open-air pavilion on the property to accommodate additional space for the events. Permit would not restrict the events to this pavilion itself. For discussion purposes, staff has drafted the following conditions that could be utilized for the special exception. Number one, the vineyard tasting rooms, vineyard slash tasting rooms, operation, operations shall be closed slash not open to the public during special events. There's an alternative motion in your package that is an alternative of number one that could be discussed or be, could be considered that states the vineyard and tasting room operations shall be closed slash not open to the public during special event that exceed X number of people. So the, the question there is if there is a threshold that the planning commission would like to see that, that, that separates the two uses out. The, the one being the, the permitted use as the farm winery and the second one being the use by special exception that's under consideration for the special events. Number two, substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by the applicant titled Schematic Plan Showing Parking and Proposed Venue at Echo Adesso Vineyards. Number three, events will be limited to a maximum of blank number of attendees and if, I'd like to review that as far as can, what we've done in past applications. All site activities, number four, excuse me, all site activities will be concluded by eleven PM. Number five, adequate off-street parking facilities and traffic controls will be provided. No parking along Borden Grant Road seven oh six. Number six, alcoholic beverages will not be self-serve. Number seven, all trash will be taken directly to the landfill and not county collection center or county green boxes. Number eight, any amplified music must be within enclosed structure and concluded by eleven PM. Number nine, lighting shall be in compliance with section thirteen oh three of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Number ten, no aerial fireworks permitted, no open air fire shall be permitted by attendees. And lastly, number seven, again for discussion purposes, approval contingent on county building department, Virginia Department of Transportation and Health Department approvals. With that, I'd like to turn this portion of the presentation over to Dr. Michael Weatherly and Sierra Weatherly. We'll stop sharing so we can identify if anyone would like to speak during a public hearing conference. So we need to say our name, right?
We know who you are. That's for the public folks speaking for public.
Um, so I guess, uh, from a proposal perspective, we gave a pretty detailed proposal. So I mean, I don't know if there's any initial questions with that, but. Uh, we do know that we have a few neighbors in the room that are concerned with, uh, what we're trying to do. We, um, obviously saw the emails that were shared with y'all and we're also, uh, familiar with. I'm a petition, I guess, that was started this week against what we're trying to do. We're just ask, asking to be treated as real as everybody else has been in our shoes, trying to apply for the same type of thing. Um, if it's okay with y'all, what I wanted to do really was just, um, go down and look at some of the emails and try to address the questions that were. Proposed there and just kind of give an answer to what we're trying to do. And then I feel like. If we do that, that might address a lot of the questions that y'all might have, that they have, obviously. They took a lot of time and energy to respond and we want to give them obviously the consideration to respond to the things that they said as well. So. Is that okay with y'all?
Yes, that's, that's a good.
Okay, so. There was a second, sorry. So what I was just gonna do is just read the email like paragraph and then kind of a short response. Um, the first one is from the Siegel on Wednesday, the sixth at nine forty-one A M. As you may know, the neighborhood in which Echo Deso is located is owned as A two. I live in, and I'll try to like summarize. So you guys, I mean, you got it. Sorry. Um, so, um, so I'll kind of do a summary real quick. I've already been disturbed by amplified music emanating from the property. It's a well-known scientific fact that sound travels further in rural areas, especially at night when the temperature drops. Um, you know, currently to date, we're only doing live music on Saturdays from one to three. And we do have an enclosed structure that folks plan. It's a converted John Deere hay wagon that we've made. That's like a stage, if you will, and it is enclosed, um, by all three sides. Um, we know that, you know, a lot of the other breweries and wineries do the same thing that we're doing. Rockbridge, Gray Valley Farm. It's the summer kind of set up. So, um, you know. In, in regards to the permanent self, we talked to Mr. Slade and then he mentioned that we are going to need to make sure it's enclosed all four and that's fine. We have the pavilion. Um, we're, we're gonna try to, you know, we're gonna create walls around that. And then we also have our barn as well, which we would have live music in that. It has four walls. And then we have our main tasting room, which live music will be in. So we feel like that would help address a lot of the music concerns. Cause I feel like that's one of the main concerns that folks have had is, is the loud music. Um, we also are, um, have our neighbors, the Bowring's in the backs and they have, you know, we've talked to them on several occasions and there are like direct neighbors. And we've asked them many a times, have you heard any of the music? Doesn't bother you? And they said, no, like we can't even literally hear it. So there are direct neighbors. We know that this, um, this lady lives in Henry Hill. That's down the way a little bit. Um, so, you know, again, if our direct neighbors can't hear it, it should be safe, safe to say that our neighbor is way down the road up Mackey's lane or Borden Grant or. On route eleven, wouldn't be able to hear the loud music, especially if it's in the enclosed structure. Um, the next point was, um, you know, about road safety and, um, you know, there's rabbits and groundhogs and squirrels and coyotes. And we know, trust me, we see them all. We kind of want our land. Um, but there, um, the point is just to that point, V dot has approved us for a moderate volume entrance, meaning we meet the criteria set by the state of Virginia for this type of permit. That's in our proposal. Our line of sight distance actually exceeds the minimum requirement. We do agree that traffic on Borden Grant Trail is too fast. However, as do most of our neighbors. We said this previously to county officials and would love to see the speed limit reduced. We're excited about the possibility of working with y'all and our neighbors at Henry Hill to make this happen. They're happy to leave the efforts. We've got two small children sitting right back there. Um, we try to keep them away from that road, but it is. Obviously there's some fast cars and trucks and tractors, as mentioned in, in other emails. Um, you know, the mention of, uh, you know, the, the next, the next point is, you know, uh, sorry, I'm. It's P five. All right. So proposed weddings and related contract events responding queries about running the bones of grounds for use and it's a stated application letter. Their current operations, that includes no special commitments to date. That's obviously why we're here. Say that in a month's time that we run a proven and successful business. You know, we, we stated that in our proposal, just to let y'all know that we know what we're doing. We're business people. We've got a lot of different businesses that we own and operate. They're all very successful. We're not just gonna just like have weddings and turn this thing loose. You know, we split time between here and Virginia Beach. We're here more than we are in Virginia Beach. We've got full-time staff on the site at all times. As mentioned, our proposal, we have a tasting room manager. We have a farm. We have two farm folks that work on the property. We're always working on the property. We've got a maintenance guy that's on staff the whole time. We're also gonna ensure that all of our, um, you know, guests have the proper insurance. They, you know, they've obviously got a, a person that manages everything that works with our.
Wedding planners, you're gonna have to have insurances. We're gonna have to have our staff on site as well. Um, we want to preserve this beautiful piece of land as much, we would love to preserve this land as much as possible, um, and share it with everybody.
If you can speak into the mic, that would, would help just lean towards it or lean it towards you.
We, you know, we're not trying to have a wedding huge venue every single weekend, Saturdays, Sundays. We want to have occasional weddings on our farm winery. Um, and we have a lot of guests that come to our area because it wanted to get back to nature. We want to give that to them and preserve that. So of course we're not trying to have something like cram down the throat of the county in our area for our neighbors. We just want to give people, um. A wonderful place for the community, which we've had a lot of wonderful neighbors come out and they are enjoying the grounds. But for also our guests that come and stay. So, um, with that being said, with, if we do have any kind of event. Um, being in the wedding business, I had a wedding business, um. Years ago, um, we would make sure there's ever precaution taken to where we would have onsite staff. The, um, wedding planner would have to be involved highly vetted, licensed and insured. The folks will have to have their own wedding insurance in addition to what we have on site. So we just want to make people. Feel more comfortable. No, we're not just saying, hey, have at it, you know, and go to town. We are, you know, this is our family's land or children are gonna inherit it and then their children. So we just want to make sure we protect it, preserve it. And get people a wonderful place to come to, not just for occasional weddings, but just in general.
There's a, um, there's a statement made about three hundred and fifty guests. I think that's an error and an oversight. We said two hundred and fifty in our proposal. And even that is like a large number. I mean, most weddings will be fifty, one hundred and fifty. Mr. Slade and put the blank in there for the provisions, which by the way, we agree with every single one of the provisions that stated. Um, so I would just say whatever everyone else's has, you know, and theirs, you know, Big Spring Farm, exclusion, all the other places, whatever theirs looks like. We would just ask for the same fair and similar treatment. I don't know what that number is, but, um, obviously. You know, we just wanted a bigger number just in case someone wants to have a larger wedding. And even if not, we could come back and ask for approval or something, you know? I mean, it's a beautiful property. I don't know if you've had a chance to come look at it yet, but it is pretty amazing. We've had a lot of people ask us to get married already and obviously that's why we're here today. Um, so, and then, you know, in regards to fireworks, we're not gonna let anyone have fireworks. We've never used fireworks on the property. Our kids use, um, sparklers on fourth of July. Hopefully that's okay. Um, but we're not gonna let any of our guests use fireworks. You know, that's, that's, that's not gonna be the case. Um, the, the fireplaces in the wine pavilion, they're being constructed. We'll be attended by full-time staff at all times and will only be operated during normal business hours. In regards to soil erosion, we're working with Jimmy Stewart and Ben Heiser. I mean, there's a well-known name in this county for excavation. They know what they're doing. Uh, the only reason that we hadn't seeded and straw, I put straw and seed down was because it was so high. It wasn't gonna take. So we were waiting and now we did and everything is looking beautiful. Mr. Heiser's coming out actually next week to do the final touches around the pavilion. And it's gonna be amazing when, when they're done. Um, so that was the first one. And I can answer any more questions for her if she has any, obviously I've wrote a lot of notes, but I'm trying to get y'all home in a decent hour. We are too. Our kid's got school tomorrow. So. Um, Mr. Phyllis sent an email. Um, he was B C C'd from Miss Siegel and then replied about an hour and a half later. Um, with some similar comments about, you know, the negative impacts that we have on our community, the negative impact that we're gonna have on the community. Um, he, he's witnessed an increase of amount of littering along Borden Grant Trail and the adjacent roadways of the past months. This may or may not be as a result of visitors or construction crew to Echo Deso, but it does raise a concern of what will occur. With increased visitation as a result of large gatherings. That's a good concern. Um, so, you know, thank you for the notes on the litter on Borden Grant Trail. We agree. This is one of the first things we noticed when we took ownership of our property. There was a ton of litter in our tree line at the front of our property upon purchase and working with V dot on our entrance, we cleaned up the debris, trash and underbrush to showcase the beautiful entrance that, that we now have today. As discussed just briefly in our proposal, Sierra and I started a nonprofit for our nation's veterans and are using our farm winery as the flagship for its operations. We currently have a Marine Corps and Army veteran working in front of our property. We were told by our neighbors that the garden we inherited was impossible to grow and a lost cause and did not even waste our time. We are proud to say that our veterans have completely transformed the garden and produced eight hundred plus pounds of organic vegetables, all of which we have donated back to Lexington Food Bank. For free. Yeah, for rock, right, right. This does not include a few hundred more pounds of organic fruit, which we have also revitalized and donated from our orchard. Our veterans maintain our entrance and are also leading the efforts and cleaning up our neighbor's lawn for grass manage, debris and litter removal. We are proud of the hard work that our vets do and, and keeping our part and cleaning, keeping our property clean and beautiful. We cannot speak for all of our neighbors up and down Borden Grant Trail, but we are happy to help and support efforts in a way that we can. We were just speaking to Mr. Sydney. He's our Marine Corps. He said, no, Sydney, that's good. Sorry. Uh, Sydney is helping us out. It's too late. It's out there. Sorry, Sydney. Um, about, you know, trying to do the adopt a mile thing along our road. That's something that he, that he would love to lead. And I think that'd be an awesome thing for us to partake in. I know there's already one on Mackey Lane. So it'd be cool to have one around Lane two and we'd be more than happy to try to lead that effort. Hopefully that'll, um, address these concerns. Um, concerned about the loud music and the fireworks, we've obviously already talked about that, you know? I moved here for peace and quiet and so did we. And I've got, you know, you can go on, just Google Echo Deso Vineyards and you could read hundreds of reviews about how like peace, quiet, calm, relaxed, come back to nature. Oh my God, this place is amazing. Like, that's what we're trying to preserve, obviously.
We don't want to jeopardize that, you know, we just want, again, to have the opportunity to host weddings there occasionally.
All right. The next one, um, we're from the show, from, uh, Jennifer Showalter. Um, CC'd a bunch of people, including Mr. Wise, um, who was the last email. Um, so. So thank you for taking, this is from, um, Michelle Walter. Thank you for time, taking the time to visit with us yesterday. We appreciate all you're doing to make some, everyone follows the rules, which we are. As we mentioned to you, we have some real concerns of what is taking place. I know we expressed some of them to you yesterday, but I thought it might be helpful if we put our thoughts right for you and others to see. Um, we've been working with Jennifer and Susan for every year now. We have had several meetings and have not once heard of any concern that they have with our current or future operations. We can also have requests to present several tech message, text messages and additional correspondence between our family and theirs. That showed the good relationship we have and that we have been open and honest about everything that we were trying to do since day one. One of those, um, is a card which I brought, which I want to read. All right. Well, I got a card here. It's pretty heartfelt about how awesome we are as a family. And you got, if you want to read it, you can. It's from them. Um, you know, this honestly, this email really hurt us bad. I'm, I'm not gonna lie. We've been pretty upset about it this week. As it, go ahead. Yep. As, as a joining landowner to Echo Deso Vineyards, we've seen a complete change in our environment over our area since the weather lease purchased the property last year. We bailed hay on the property for years and it was heart wrenching to watch what was happening. What was once a peaceful, quiet area with very few people is now the complete opposite. The driveway going into Echo Deso Vineyards is like the highway and people coming, going all the times. At night, the increase in lighting looks like a small airport and I'm sure this is only gonna get worse with the new pavilion that they have recently built. There are picnic tables sitting everywhere along with porta-johns for people to use during the music festivals. We've seen big flags flying. We just observed a lot of excavating that doesn't appear to be monitored by the county. I have a feeling the last owner would be sick to walk back and see all the changes that have been made. What was once a quiet, peaceful agriculture area was now heavily commercialized to be planned. It seems that what they are doing doesn't fit in with us at all, our area. And nothing that we've done on the property has changed this show, show office property or any other neighbor that surrounds us. We understand that the show offers the farm to land and use the hay for quite some time now. However, since day one, we have iterated that we would over time begin phasing out the hay and farming again in our own way. Which includes grapes for wine and organic fruit and vegetables. We are expanding these operations, which is taking away from the amount of hay. However, there is still a large amount of hay in back of the property of which we've made available for use. This is our land to farm as we wish and we're trying to be the best and be a good neighbor to accommodate everybody the best we can. We would disagree on the peace and quiet comment and would at this time. Like to read a card we received in mail just yesterday from a neighbor and I am gonna read this one because it's kind of cool. Cause it's got a Boston Terrier on it and that's the dog we have. She's mom and Mia. She thinks he's the farm dog. So, uh, we are thrilled that you are bringing new life to the property on Borden Grant Trail. It's looking great and we are loving the opportunities, opportunity to enjoy this peace and beauty from the neighbor. We just met them like a week ago, a couple of weeks ago. Um, the comment about the lights is inaccurate. Since purchasing the property one year ago, we have not added a single light to the farm. You can easily fact check this against previous G S imagery and or by simply Googling the property address on the internet. Our pavilion is being strategically placed behind the trees to keep it out of sight as much as possible. It will only have four chandelier lights hidden in the trusses of the timber frame. And we will also include uplighting again, which will go up into the trusses and remain strategically placed to keep the lighting bright enough for those to move around the structure. But not bright enough to hinder the view of the beautiful starry night skies, which we all love so much. The picnic tables were temporary fixed until the pavilion was completed, hopefully in thirty to forty-five days. Um, those will be spread out in different places on the property and be removed from site once the project is complete. Um, we will however, yes, have seating, a few picnic tables, some mat around deck chairs under around the pavilion, the porta-john. We only have one will also be removed to a more tucked away location. And if we add others, obviously they'll be hidden. Um, in regard, in regards to the signage, we didn't know there was a rule about advertising and marketing our land, but we can certainly work with the county and ensure we're meeting all the guidelines. In regards to excavation, we work with the most experienced, well-known excavators in the company I mentioned. You know, um, obviously the folks before we, you know, that can be attested to by Mr. Sladen, Rockbridge County, Mr. Trout, Mr. Cameron from V dot and Mr. Orson, who I saw. From Perkins and Orson. Our, our excavation partners have at all times maintained best practices, including laying down straw and seed. If you are at our farm, I already talked about that before. Um, so, you know, at the end of the day, we're just trying to maintain the beauty of the property. And if we are putting up a structure, we're being very strategic about hiding it. Like Mr. Clark came out and put in, um, like an electrical panel. And we made sure to, that it was behind the trees so that no one can see it. And you definitely can't see it from Borden Grant Trail. He came seated for walking down the lane. So we're trying to be very strategic about what we're doing because we also enjoy the peace and quiet and we don't want it to be all crazy loud party like either. Um, you know, some weddings, you know, aren't, aren't gonna be like that. And okay, so, uh, now that the weather lease are applying for a special exemption permit, we're terrified. Let's come next. It's obviously, we're not concerned about keeping the air agriculture, but instead see this as a business opportunity and, and making everything as commercial as it possibly can. That goes on and on. In regards to making the air commercial and seeing this as a business opportunity. The statement is not true. And in fact, the quite opposite, we understand that you're upset about the land for us, you know, using the land for farming in a different way. But we're still using it for agriculture purposes. We are excited to share these experiences with our neighbor and tour and bring tourists to the, to the county. Which should be a good thing and not seen as negative. The events we have will be for guests only on weekends, more than likely Saturday afternoon, evening and not take away from anything else we're doing agriculturally. And I, you know, I got just again, just Google the property and you'll see, you know, all these, it's like a piece of Italy landed in the middle of Virginia, Chris. I don't even usually leave reviews, but we visited and had the best time. The property is absolutely gorgeous with breathtaking views. I mean, they just go on and on and on about how beautiful the property is and not commercial looking. Um, there's a comment about Walmart, which I'll get to in a minute.
Yeah, we're not gonna put up any industrial commercial lighting on the property because the main draw of that area for us and for our guests. The night sky is beautiful, especially in the summertime with the lightning bugs and you have the stars and. We're not, we don't want to take that away from our guests. We don't want to take it away from our own family. So we're gonna try again. We're, we're gonna do everything we can to preserve and comply with the county and work with our neighbors. We just. Want to let everybody know that.
To protect our farm from development and to preserve the beauty of the farmland, we put it in a conservation easement for the Virginia Outdoor Foundation years ago. Again, this is from Show Walters. This was a way for us to know the land would always be protected from development. Now with the vineyard next door owned by a couple with an endless list of future plans, we are not very thrilled about how this will impact us. Farming is the only source of income for our family and we don't want this new business to unpack us in any way, shape or form. We gotta say to all the statements out of all the emails, this one hurt the most. We've been giving, loving and honoring. The hard work of all of our neighbors since day one. One of the only reasons we bought this property is because the majority of it was in conservation easement. That's what, that's what appealed to us so much about the property. We, as our guests, as heard from the, you know, some of the reviews I read, want to connect with nature. You know, we understand that they're hurt again, but it's our land that we're gonna do what we want to do with it. And, you know, I'm sorry that hurts, but. The increase in traffic we seen is a concern. Borden Grant Trail, Mackey's Lane, Tim Ridge Road are nearby county roads that lead to vineyards. These roads are dangerous enough. Without an increase in traffic, moving and transporting farm equipment seems to get more and more dangerously sheer. With people not use these roads or having to yield to slow-moving vehicles is rather frightening. And it goes on to talk about drought and tractors and all that kind of stuff. Um, you know, I said previously, we would like the speed limit dropped on the road. I don't know who we need to talk to about that. We mentioned that to you a little bit before. If not, you know, that's okay. But again, we've been approved by V dot in the state of Virginia for the, the highest volume for this entrance. So our entrance is approved, um, by the state and V dot. This is obviously one of the most important steps in this process. And one that we worked very hard with V dot and Mr. Slade and, and the county to accomplish before you can come in here today to apply for this. Cause we knew that would be a major concern. So that's why we crossed that bridge, you know, a little while ago. Um, it's probably one of my favorite parts. Um, as far my next order of any, we foresee many issues with the practices we're forming outside of the fence. Um, we take pride in keeping our fields as free of weeds as possible, putting down turkey litter and, and the smell that it has and. Going on and on about, you know, weaning calves and. going on and on about, you know, weaning calves and uh, you know, in the winter, it might spook the calves and all this stuff. Um, poultry litter isn't a concern for us or our guests, we live on a farm, kind of use the smell now, as, as our guests are. Um, that have been coming for the last year now and staying in our property. We have spoken, um, we've spoken about the sprays, and you know, we understand that they're, that they're unhealthy and dangerous, and that's, you know, that's their farming practice, they're going to do what they're going to do, but we don't, you know, as far as like the co-op, we just, we can't control like everybody in the county. We're doing the best we can to just deal with our property, we can't control everybody else's property. As far as, most people don't get married in the winter, in January, February, out in the cold when it's snowing, I don't see them doing that, so. And you know, in regards to, we have Mr. Back right next to us, he's got tons of cattle and cow, like, our, our guests have never bothered them at all. I just don't see this, also, to even get to that property, you've got to walk like across hundreds of acres through another property, get over a, like, a row of trees and barbed wire fence, and then keep going and walk like another like fifty acres to even get to where the cattle are. So I mean, I just don't see that being an issue. Also too, I mean, all the other venues, I'm sure they're close to agriculture areas as well. I mean, just, you know, I don't think there's a, a history of that happening. With the last, last paragraph, with plans of wedding venues and more cabins, it's obvious that everything we already see is a problem, will only get worse. With no concerns for run up now, we have no wonder how they will handle runoff from parking lots, how they'll deal with the increase in sewers. Will it look like Walmart by the time they're done adding more lights? None of this seems right in areas on agriculture, we don't want this, we don't have to look at this on our side of the fence pretty much. And we're working with the county to ensure we're, we are and will be following all necessary rules and regulations for current operations and events. Once this exemption is approved, I believe that light one provision in there, we talked to Mr. Clark, and that's like, yeah, we're not going to add like Walmart parking lots to our property. We don't want that. I don't think a bride and groom would appreciate that. Um, in regards to our property, look like the Walmart parking lot, you know, again, go on Google and just look at some of the reviews. I printed a couple out, and I'm more than going to read a couple, but. We're able to relax, we saw fifteen deer frolicking in the field at one point, is a beautiful way to start our year. Echo, Echo Deso is so beautiful, if you're looking for relaxing, quiet getaway, this is the place to be, Melissa. Being from Virginia Beach, a weekend trip to the mountains is just what our family needed, the peace and quiet was amazing, Michael. It's a great place to unplug, Tim. Not sure about, not sure that pictures can even portray the beauty of this place, it's beautiful everywhere. The views of the sunset and stars are magical, Teresa. And they just go on and on and on, and literally hundreds of reviews about how beautiful the property is, not a Walmart parking lot. Um, the last email, and I won't really get into it, because it's a lot more of the same from Mr. Wise, was the music which we've addressed, the fireworks which we've addressed, the traffic which we've addressed. Um, I will say that out of all of our neighbors, we have talked to Mr. Wise and invited him over for, you know, a coffee or dinner, and we've met almost all of our other neighbors, we have not met them yet, although we have extended the, the courtesy. And again, with all of the neighbors that we spoke to, and there's been a lot that have come to our farm, um, we've told them exactly what we're trying to do and in the phases that we're trying to do it. And so, you know, to hear that it's like a big shock and surprise of what we're trying to do, just, you know, again, just kind of hurt our feelings a little bit, but it's okay, this is, you know, business, and we're trying to get through it. In general, um, we're really excited about this, we think it's a great opportunity for the county. Obviously, there were some comments about all the, you know, jobs that were going to be created more in a negative light in one of the emails, I didn't get to that, but we see this as like a positive, there's going to be a lot of, we already employed two people from Fairfield, and almost all the people are from this county or a neighboring county, this is going to create a lot of jobs. Again, we're pretty successful business people, and we know what we're doing, and we're just happy to bring this kind of opportunity to the county. Sierra and I grew up in northeast North Carolina in a very country town, very smaller than this one. Um, and you know, we've lived in Virginia Beach for a while now, but we've also been in Nelson for about twenty years, so, you know, we're familiar with the area. We love our neighbors, we think they're great, we understand that their feelings are hurt a little bit. We're happy to address any of y'all's questions that you have for us about what we're trying to do, and obviously work with Mr. Sladen and the team to ensure that we meet all the provisions that are outlined in there and then anything else moving forward. But we think this is a great opportunity, we don't want to see counting this out on.
Yeah, and we're willing to comply and collaborate with anybody. Points that you brought up, but we're totally okay with all of it. It's just a matter of saying where we go from here.
Yeah, I mean, one last comment is, you know, we, we're a farm winery, we got to sample our first wine last week, which is super excited, we're going to have a Chardonnay cap front this year, but what, before we got to, you know, before we get where we can actually sell all of our wine, which is going to be a nice production, we, we could have sold anybody's wine with our license that we have, but we chose to sell Rockbridge and Junk. All, all of these wines from our area, we sell the cheeses, you know, from the local cheese growers in our county and our area. Yeah, I mean, so like, we're trying to do the right thing here, we just would like the support of you guys and more than everybody else along the way, it'd be great, so, thank you. Sorry, that was a mouthful, there was a lot of questions, so.
No, I, I think that, I think that's good, and I think as far as questions will arise as we get comments from, from people, so.
I have a question just right off the bat, just because I keep hearing you say some weddings, occasional weddings, like, how many are you thinking when you say occasional?
Weddings are usually on Saturdays, so I don't see people getting married on.
Well, my daughter's having to get married on a Friday, because every Saturday in 2022 is taken, so now we're doing.
Not at our farm.
Friday, Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I don't know what the number looks like, again, as far as like questions like that, I would just say, please hold us to the same standard and look at like what all the other venues in the county have.
Down the road, um, but then again, we're not, we're similar, we're, we don't want to have it where it's, where our guests can enjoy it, where we can't enjoy it. So as to a specific number, is it going to be like every Saturday and Sunday throughout the year? No, is it going to be five or six weddings a month? Probably not, because that would, that would, that's a lot, um.
You know, I just wondered what you guys were thinking, it's going to be two a month from April to October.
Grow into it, honestly, like, I think to start, we want to probably start small and just do like, you know, one every other Saturday, just to make sure we can get our feet wet, and we, we, we do ensure that everything goes off without a hitch, and then possibly grow from there and get into, yeah, maybe Friday, Saturday, every week or whatever, it just depends.
When you have a wedding, what happens to the wine tasting, are there two separate?
We're going to shut it down, that was one of the provisions which we're totally comfortable with, and we want to do that anyways, because we would shift our staff over to more focusing on the wedding, so.
And, and as far as parking, I mean, I heard the number three fifty, which seems like an awful lot of guests, but.
Look, that's great.
Well, three fifty wasn't even what we proposed. Again, it was two fifty, and most weddings are going to be fifty to hundred fifty, so if you want to knock it down and make it smaller, okay, but, you know, we're also not, Mr. Sladen said, you know, well, how, like, same thing with like the numbers, it's like, well, what about twenty-five? Well, absolutely not, we're not going to shut down our tasting, if we're wedding at twenty-five people, doesn't make sense to get.
And have you thought about parking, I mean, even if it's two fifty, do you have places to park?
And it's, it's in the proposal, but we have, we already have like three or four places and an overflow parking area, which can hold a lot of cars.
Right, and, and outside of the parking lot, we plan on doing weddings for wineries, and you put trees around it, you make it look, it's not your typical gravel parking lot. It's going to be something that's not only going to be for the occasional wedding, but it's going to be for, if anybody's coming to taste wine, and they want to park down at the pavilion and have a picnic out there. So it's just accommodate, you know, the ebb and flow of who's there.
And again, getting into the strategic of what we're trying to do, like, even the parking lot that we have by the pavilion, we put it behind the row of trees, like, we did that on purpose, so it will be hidden, we did that for a reason.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, I think what, what we need to do is go to the public hearing at this time, so, and we may have more questions for you after that's.
All right.
And that may raise some questions for you all. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. On this, we do ask that people uh, that are present come forward, state your name, majesty of district, and your address, if that's pertinent. Um, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if comments begin to get redundant, then we'll ask folks to move along. I'll either ask Mr. Musso or uh, Mrs. to have the timer going. Okay, all right, so um, is there anybody, let's go from the list, I know there are people that are present here.
Yes, uh, first on the list is uh, Chris Bowering.
Thank you very much for letting me have this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, I'm Christopher Bowering. Uh, our address is one seven eight Sheep Creek Lane, which is technically a driveway off of Borden Grant Trail. My wife and I live in the property house that is directly next to the Weatherlys property. So we touch uh, along a line, and we share that line. As a matter of fact, the Weatherlys have a right of way to our driveway and can use it at any time that they feel that they need to use it. My wife and I have lived in that property for twenty-seven years, and we've watched that particular property, the one that Mike was referring to, change over that time. As a matter of fact, before the Weatherlys bought the property, the Crockards owned it and built dwellings, houses, barns, uh, and other uh, buildings on that property, and we watched it change. Uh, the Crockards also put in uh, grape vines um, in order to grow grapes and to produce a, a personal uh, amount of wine for themselves. And since then, the Weatherlys have improved that property tremendously. And my wife and I have never had any reason to feel as though we were being imposed upon or we were concerned about traffic. We are not, we are not concerned about the lights. Uh, I'm an amateur astronomer, and I'm still perfectly capable of seeing the Milky Way at night, uh, even though there are some dusk to dawn lights on our property as well. But there are, there is no problem with the noise. I have never been bothered, neither has my wife, by music or noises from crowds who are there to drink wine and perhaps, as you might imagine, become loud. I've never been bothered by any noise uh, whatsoever from anybody uh, visiting that property. They drive along the road uh, to that property carefully. Uh, I've never been bothered by the dust that's thrown up, they have a gravel driveway. Uh, as a matter of fact, trash has actually improved along that road, Borden Grant. Since the Weatherlys have moved in, I have noticed that there's been less trash, and I live on Borden Grant, and I notice that particularly. Um, so in my opinion, the trash is actually, the situation is improved. My wife and I, of course, go out occasionally and pick it up, but at times I have been uh, greatly uh, noticed the fact that there has been less trash there. Uh, and I have uh, ride my bike along Borden Grant almost every day, and I can assure you that there is plenty of people that drive quickly along that road. Uh, but the people that stay at uh, the Weatherlys, oops, I'm out of time, seem to be able to take care of the, of the driving, and I appreciate it. Uh, and lastly, on record, I approve of the improvements that the Weatherlys have made wholeheartedly, and I look forward to the progress and investment that they're making with that property, and I am very glad that they are our neighbors, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowering.
Next up is uh, Jennifer Showalter.
Good afternoon, how are you guys? Um, thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight, I live at five thirty-five Decatur Road, Fairfield, Virginia. Um, my family owns a farm that joins the Weatherlys. Um, and Mr. Weatherly pretty much went over the letter that I emailed to each of you pretty thoroughly. Um, I think you can tell um, that my family is very concerned about this. This is totally against our nature to speak out, we try to mind our own business and keep to ourselves, so. I'm very uncomfortable up here talking, I don't like doing this, I'd much rather be at home working cattle right now. But um, it is very, very concerning to me, very concerning. Um, a lot of what I hear tonight is how it is right now, I guess what I'm concerned about is what is coming. Um, I don't really understand how you can have a parking lot for a hundred and fifty, two hundred, three hundred guests and not have lights for these people to get back to their cars at night after they've attended a wedding. Um, it's little things like that that do concern me. Um, far as the comment about no additional lights, that is possibly very true, I don't know that. Um, I do know there is a difference now in the lighting, maybe Mr. Crockett never turned the lights on before, I don't know. Um, I am really, really concerned because we have two poultry houses, and we built those poultry houses for two reasons. One, to raise poultry, and the second reason to have poultry litter to put on our land to help with our fertilizer. And um, I really don't perceive people enjoying sitting out at a wedding smelling turkey litter. And our property is right next to this. So um, I just have to question what will, you know, what issues that will, will come from that. And um, our whole livelihood is farming, all we have, only paychecks we get is cattle and turkeys. So, we don't have a bunch of successful businesses that we can fall back on, it's cows and turkeys. Um, the traffic is a big concern of mine, um, when you're on a tractor on Borden Grant Trail in Mackey's Lane, you better hold on to the steering wheel, because it's already dangerous, it's all get out, and people do not respect you as it is. So when you bring outsiders in that are not familiar with the area and are not familiar with dealing with people on tractors, slow moving equipment that takes the whole road, I mean, what's going to happen? So, those are just some of my main concerns, and I don't want any hard feelings, I want to be good neighbors with everybody. Like I said, this is absolutely, totally against my nature to be up here, but I am concerned. So thank you guys for reading my letter and listening to me.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Uh, next up is uh, Susan Showalter. Okay. Uh, next is Catherine Siegel.
Excuse me, as, as Mr. Sladen said, my name is Catherine Siegel. I live at two five Henry Hill Drive, which is the Henry Hill subdivision, that is located a half mile south of the property, um, up for special exception permit tonight. Um, first thing I want to say is that I understand the uh, overwhelming wonder that these people feel about the beauty of the area in which we live, it is beautiful. All of us at Henry Hill, and I think, I can't speak for everyone, I could tell you that, at least for me, and I believe for others, we came because of this, because of the peaceful enjoyment of the area, there were many other places we could have gone. We came knowingly into an A-two zone, knowingly without commercial enterprises. What the Weatherlys are requesting is not an inherent part of the wine industry. It is not a part of the growing or the selling of grapes. It is a special exception permit for a commercial enterprise to have weddings and special events. That is not there, but there's by right, under their rules of um, the agritourism or under the rules of wineries. So this is a discretionary uh, giving, if you will, on your part. The other thing I'd like to point out is my district, I'm sorry, I'm from the South District. My district representative is not here tonight, my commissioner is absent. And I would like you to stay any further proceedings until he can be present. I do ask that you review the fifty-five signatures on the petition that was sent to you, requesting that you outwardly reject this special exception permit, and that many, many issues that have been addressed tonight, if this comes up again, be addressed with extreme scrutiny and with many more people participating, if at all possible, but specifically with Mr. Lucas present. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is uh, Mr. Thomas Duke Senior.
My name is Thomas Edward Duke Senior, everybody calls me Ted. I think I have the adjourn, the longest adjoining property line with the property owned by C, what is it, C-five BDL. I was not notified officially of this event. I found out about it some other way. I have no objection to the winery. When the winery was approved, I thought that was a great idea, and I have no objection to a wedding event. I have objection to the traffic. Borden Grant Trail and Mackey's Lane are a disaster. Few years ago, they wanted to collect all the trash in the northern part of the county. People up there said, no, they didn't want all the trash trucks, so they trash collection down at the dump. So all the trash trucks come in front of my house. Anybody who lives in Dina Vista and works in Stewart Straff comes past my house. Anybody who lives in Stewart Straff and works in Dina Vista comes by my house. It's a main thoroughfare, we don't need two hundred and fifty or three hundred cars coming to a wedding and a winery at the same time. If there has to be, if there has to be a wedding event, definitely should not have the winery open at the same time. Traffic on Borden Grant Trail is dangerous. It is very difficult to turn into my driveway. If you're coming north, people run into the back of you. If you're coming south, they will run into you. If you're coming south, they will run into you coming around the corner. There's a curve in the road. The speed limit is 55, 55 miles an hour. I tried to get it lowered. You know what they told me? Won't do any good because nobody will be it anyway. I said, well, why don't you send a policeman to enforce it? Yes, but the answer to that was two. Okay. I just, I'm not opposed to the wedding event. I just think you need the limit. How many people you're talking about because of the traffic? I'm not worried about the noise, the lights. I've got a wedding. I have a wedding event on the north side of me. I already have one. Doesn't bother us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Duke. Is there anyone else?
Next up is Laura Deal.
Hi, Commissioners. Can you hear me? My name is Laura Neal. I live at 423 Sheep Creek Lane in South River District. I would also like to reiterate that it's a little concerning that my commissioner is not here this evening. So I don't know what the precedent is for that. I'm gonna read a letter I wrote and I would like to go, for it to go into the record, please. And I would like to know that I can complete my letter because it's important to me. And I don't know if you've read it or not. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's see. Hello, I am Laura Neal and I have lived at 423 Sheep Creek Lane since April of 1990. Thirty-one plus years and my land adjoins the Weatherlys. I grew up on a farm across the mountain in Orange County and sought a rural lifestyle here in Rockbridge. That is why we bought our property. I am opposed to the granting of a special exception permit to the Echo Deso Vineyard. I remain confused about the state regulations which allow a winery to open and hold events and sell wine based upon the existence of a one-acre hobby vineyard and subsequent planning of several additional acres of grapes. In a few short months, a great change in my neighborhood has occurred without any say on the part of me or the county. I'm very unhappy about the expectation that, given the legal status of its current business, a decision could be made that, well, these folks are already holding events and have constructed some of the necessary infrastructure. So we might as well just grant them these additional requests. I'm not suggesting a punitive denial of the SEP, but rather a recognition that the rural nature of this area would be further compromised by the allowance of events, of events, which would increase the numbers of people attending events next door. A neighboring venue that offers special events every day of the year, even once a week for hundreds of guests greatly alters my chosen lifestyle. Due to the lay of the land, the newly constructed pavilion is in a direct sound light of my home. I have occasionally heard music this past summer drifting up from their front field venue. I am all for parties, but every weekend, listening to the sounds of the construction of the pavilion this past summer created grave concerns about what I'm going to hear coming from an open-air pavilion being used as a guest venue. Construction occurred during the summer months when vegetation provided some sound barrier. So being able to hear so well with the soundproofing benefits of summer vegetation causes me great anxiety about what I will hear when the leaves are on. The pavilion is a beautiful structure, but seeing it and wondering about its potential future use has made me a nervous wreck. I'm an outdoor person and work and recreate outdoors year-round. Any kind of music, live or recorded, amplified or not, is going to impact me in a significant way. Honestly, I don't want to live beside a special.
Ms. Neal, I'm going to interrupt you right now. We all have the letter and I will request that letter be put in public record.
I wish for my neighbors who are here to hear my words, if that's okay. We, we listened to the applicants for some time.
All right, we'll, we'll extend it for three more minutes, but that's, that's it. Please.
I don't want to live beside a place that has weddings and reunions and races and ballgames in a children's playground. It keeps adding Airbnbs and cabins and outdoor rooms for increasing number of guests. Now I'm worried about the resale value of my property. Who wants to live beside a winery that is also a special events venue and pitching itself as a destination for numerous activities, food trucks, fundraisers, festivals, weddings, large gatherings and a steady stream of overnight guests? I support a landowner's right to do as they wish on their land. I felt the reason we have zoning regulations was so that if you want to engage in a particular endeavor, you acquire a property where that activity is allowed. Zoning regulations are important laws in our society so that we can get along with one another by knowing what the rules are. While flexibility is important, it seems to me an exception would be one where the initial intent of the zone is the number one consideration for making a decision of whether to allow an exception. And while the scenic pastoral surroundings support the goals of the Weatherlys, what is being asked for in the SEP will definitely not support the goals of either the farmers or those who intentionally sought peace and quiet in an area zone for agricultural use. The sounds of farming operations or the occasional neighbors hosting a bit of shindig, those are normal. I have heard the Weatherlys are very nice people and I do not doubt that, but I do not think that is sound reasoning for supporting their application. I have always gotten along with my neighbors and hope that we can respect different opinions on this application. Also, I wonder how many special events venues does Rockbridge County want? There are already two locations within five miles of my home. There are more scattered around the county. I feel concerned that in trying to be fair, there, there may be an indication, inclination to say yes because the county said yes to previous applications. I do not mean to be insulting, just recognize that precedence and fairness should not provide the basis upon which commercial venues and agricultural zones are considered. And I don't need to read my concerns. I think they've been covered. I have confidence that when considering this request being marketed to the county with the promise of easy tax revenues and an increase in jobs, that the cost will be thoroughly investigated. Eventual road widening and increase in law enforcement, additional waste at the landfill, additional monitoring of land use and all the impacts of hundreds of people who need a basic source of infrastructure services are few. And I hope you will also consider, okay.
Go ahead and, go ahead and continue. You're very near the end.
I hope you also consider the intangible costs that are often discounted but are often the death knell for what attracted people to an area in the first place. The views and charm of our agricultural landscape, cattle grazing on green pastures, scenic views including hay bales and barns. These exist because farmers are working hard. And while land values skyrocket so that people can buy land to enjoy the views, the people who create these pastoral views cannot acquire feasible farmland because farming does not produce an income that permits them, permits them to buy land at these elevated prices. I recognize that you all recognize this dilemma. But I just think that it's important to not forget that something is wrong here. Thinking about how we want our county to look decades down the road and whether we wish to retain its rural character is a choice. And thank you all for your service and for considering my comments. Thank you so much for laying the goal.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Next up is John C. Wise.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I guess I owe Mr. Webber an apology. I, I don't, I don't call the TV right this over. But yeah, nice to meet you. Yeah. So, you know, I, I just listened to, to their, Mr. Webber's presentation and I was amazed about how there was so much detail about what they weren't going to do. Because what I saw in the application was that they were going to have something 300, they won 365 days. That's what I read in there. Is that in, is that in there, Mr. Sladen?
I'm uncertain if it expresses the states, the dates.
So what, what my impression is, is that the, the Weatherlys want to be good neighbors and maybe we can work something out. But I have some concerns and, and I think I've, you've already received one email from me. And basically it's the, the problem that we're, you are going to have to confront over and over and over again. Is the commercial development and agriculture areas. And this, this is what it, this is what it's about. This is, you know, you talk about vineyards, that's great. Wineries, that's a commercial enterprise. You talk about wedding venues and special event venues. You can have all sorts of special events, not just weddings, right? So those are commercial venues, those are commercial things in agricultural zones. And I do think that you need, as you go forward, as I said in my letter, to think about this in the future. Now I'm going to get back to my letter because I'm get off track if I don't read what I have to say. I sent the members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Slade, an email expressing my concern and hate. And I hope that that will be in the record. It is. And I'd like to make this a part of the record also. As I said in my, in that email, I'm opposed to the Weatherlys' request for the special events venue. When I heard about their plans for this, I found out the state law that trumps the county control of vineyards and winery events. I do not see any good reason to increase the commercialization of this property beyond what is presently allowed. And of course, the Airbnb is there in addition to the winery. So there are other commercial aspects already. After seeing concrete trucks and 10-ton dump trucks using Sheep Creek Lane to build the new pavilion at Echo Deso, I called Mr. Webber to find out what was going on. They do have rights on Sheep Creek Lane, but I wondered why the construction folks were not using the Eagle Deso Lane. Well, there wasn't a road to the building, sorry. So they just came in there and started using it. Well, Mr. Webberly say, oh, our bridge is out. It's been fixed. It's going to be taken care of. They're not going to be coming down. They continued to do it. Now that might not have been Mr. Mr. Webberly's or Ms. Webberly's fault because, you know, contractors, you know, they go down the road one time, then they go down the road the next time. They don't get the message. But anyway. So, but we've had tractor trailers come a mile off Sheep Creek Lane all the way up to our house and have a hard time. We have just a little bit more.
Take just a few minutes more.
Okay. And I went on the Echo Deso website and it's not their fault again. But the Google map shows on the graphic that Sheep Creek Lane is the entrance to Echo Deso. And I took, I think about three weeks continuing to hassle Google Maps. They finally changed it. So these are the problems that we're having with commercial developments in agricultural parts of the county. And, you know, you've got to consider what they've asked for and what they're willing to, you know, negotiate and everything. I understand all that stuff because I've been here and I've done that. So I understand what's going on. I am concerned about open fires, fireworks, celebratory gun salutes, loud amplified music, lots of loss of dark night skies with potential accidents. These, some of these things can be addressed if you take the time and energy to do it. One final thing, Mr. Lucas is not here. He's a representative for the South River District. And I hope that you will punt on this until he comes and has the ability to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Are there any other?
That is all, that is signed up to speak. You may recognize.
Do we have any electronic?
We do have some question and answers. Bear with me here. We do have a statement. It is, I believe it's a statement, not a question, a question from Zach. Zach Filis, and I'm probably butchering that last name. I apologize. The first comment was, I've heard music at my house. I live in the far side of the neighborhood, farthest from the winery. I'm concerned music will continue to be loud and also concerned that the events end at 11:00 PM. Traffic and noise will be heard out throughout the neighborhood. Zach Filis, F-I-L-I-S. Second one, I live in Henry Hill neighborhood. Forgot to add that to my original statement. That is all of the questions and answers. With that, I would ask if anybody's present on Zoom that this would be the appropriate time to raise your hand as far as attendees. As far as the chat, there are no open chats. Go back to attendees and there are no, no hands raised. With that, I will turn it back to the Rockbridge District.
Okay, at this time, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for this. Bring it to the Planning Commission and discussion.
It sounds to me like we need to table this until Mr. Lucas is back. You know, I agree. I think you need to have your representative here before we, I don't know if we need to continue with discussion. I kind of, hopefully, I guess he'll see the minutes and we'll be able to, you know, get up to speed on what these comments were.
Absolutely. If, if any planning, so, so typically the day after, sometimes the weekend after, the week after, I said the Board of Supervisors, a update email of the action of the Planning Commission and always, as y'all know, always share that with the Planning Commission members that, that may have been absent at the time. So I'll certainly follow up. That includes the YouTube link that, that they can obviously view this, view this stream on that way as well.
Yes. Should we postpone that? We closed the public hearing that we, that would be done or how would we do that? Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting.
Yes, and we did, we did, just for, for some bookkeeping, bookkeeping business. Bookkeeping business, we, we have opened and physically closed or formally closed the public hearing. So next month will not be a public hearing. Historically speaking, we have allowed for public comment without having a bona fide public hearing. To address Mr. Duke's question or concern about not receiving the certified mail, to, in order to have a public hearing, we, the planning staff is, are required to do an add in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks prior to the meeting. We're, we're required to do a zoning action pending sign and we are required to do certified mail to all direct adjourners. So during the previous speakers or after Mr. Duke, I had confirmed that he, he, we did send certified mail and according to the tracking number, someone signed for that. We mailed it on September 29th, ample time prior to this meeting and someone signed for that. And we'll have to check this, but someone signed for that on October 1st, according to the tracking number associated with the certified mail. So again, we'll have to check on that, but I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Going to ask that.
That was a question I had. Okay. All right. So I guess in the form of a motion, we're going to.
Yes, I make a motion that we postpone any, do we say election or, or vote?
It would be postponed.
Discussion.
Yes, until the, the next meeting, which is going to be.
November 10th.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Make a motion that we postpone any discussion for a special exemption permit for a special event on the Ag 2 Zone per LDR Section 603.03-24 to the proper known as, as a des. Vineyards located at 340 Echo Desa Lane, Fairfield. Identified as tax map, 6415-B1 and 6415-B in South River Magistral District.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Motion carries. So we will bring this back up again next month.
So we do have a couple other agenda items. That's all the public hearings. That's all.
I just want to thank everybody for being here and expressing their opinions and showing your voice both for and against. So thank you and we will.
It may be appropriate to just take a two-minute break. If, if anybody wants to join us for the rest of the meeting, they can, but if they want to.
If you want to, if you want to depart at this time, that, I don't blame you.
You complained earlier.
Okay, go excuse yourself.
She just told me the 10th, I think. My mind is going. I've got to run to the restroom.
My mind is going. I've got to run to the restroom.
See ya. Yeah, yeah. Good seeing you. We're getting there. Unfortunately, the next agenda item, fine. The, the solar discussion. The discussion between you and I, that is. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Fair enough. I appreciate you passing along. Thank you, the big bucks for.
Thank you. All right, Chris, are you, is everybody ready? Let's, let's move on. Okay, so number 10 on the agenda is zoning text amendment, discussing on the proposed solar energy ordinance.
Yes, staff has continued to work on the draft ordinance and I use that, I use that word lightly because it's actually more or less Mr. Musso. Ms. Huffman had done a tremendous amount of legwork when we started the zoning text amendment on obtaining ordinances from different localities. But with that being said, staff has continued to work on the draft ordinance for proposed solar ordinance, zoning text amendment. We've incorporated most of the, all of the ideas that, that were discussed at the September meeting. And with that being said, the staff would like to update the planning commission on the status of the draft ordinance and next steps moving forward. Staff's really reviews, we're not at the point, you know, that, that we would like to submit it for, for your review at this time, but, but hopeful that we will do that in the upcoming months. I will say hopeful with next month, but it really is a workload dependent. Obviously, staff believes that the review of the ordinance by individual planning commission or a sub promoter, subcommittee is the appropriate next step. And so, so what we, what we didn't want you to think is that we, we had this draft ordinance on the solar ordinance that we were, that we were sitting on it, was not on the forefront of our minds that we just provided. We just felt it'd be beneficial to put it on the agenda, provide you an update and have, hopefully have additional information next month. And that was it for that.
Not a public hearing and I think we'll go down the road. Okay, so next we're looking at the zoning text amendment discussion of the proposed wood yard ordinance.
Yes, this, this is also, I do not have a PowerPoint on this particular one. As you know, at the September 8th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission approved, recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors proposed zoning text amendment that would define wood yards and provide them as a use by special exception in the agricultural limited, that's the A1 and the agricultural general, the A2 zoning districts. At the September 27th, 2021 Board of Supervisor meeting, the board held its public hearing for the proposed zoning text amendment. While the Board of Supervisors was supported of the proposed land use as a use by special exception in the A1 and A2 zoning district, the board expressed concerns on approving the zoning text amendment without additional parameters, criterias for the proposed use. The board approved a motion to revert, to refer the zoning text amendment for the wood yards back to the planning commission for further considerations related to the 100 year floodplain, which is technically speaking, the special flood hazard area, minimum lot size, buffer requirements and scale of operation. So with that, this is obviously referring back to, you know, updating you of the board's action, updating the, the, the planning commission, I should say, of the board's action on September 22nd and starting the discussion on, on how the planning commission would like to proceed from here.
Did they accept the definition for wood yards?
Yes, well, the, the one thing that was, the, the one thing that was discussed is the scale of operation. As far as there were, there was some comments that were made after the bona fide public hearing about the scale of operation and smaller uses of a property that, that have a, a wood yard feature to it. There was one gentleman that spoke in the Cars Creek District about his, I think it was a son or daughter having a, a sort of woodworking business and they have a, they have a, obviously a pile of logs on that particular farm. So staff has recommended that, that we increase the, or modify the, the language to, to include something to the fact that the primary use of the property is for sorting, sorting and, and commercial, it'd be the primary use of the parcel of land or portion thereof used for commercial sorting and marketing of logs.
Okay, so the definition would have as, as the primary.
Come in, primary source used for the commercial store. I mean, you could just stick those two words in.
Again, we, we really were hoping to have some, some draft recommendations or some, some language in front of y'all, but, but again, time did allow, did not allow for that. But Mr. Musso and I did talk about that and we think that that would be easily achievable with the, with the primary.
Reinvent the wheel here. It's a couple of words.
Then I might want to get somebody to, on my farm, it's not a log yard.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Be the primary source.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we need to make sure that, that we would do that. Okay, so. I mean, there's, there's so many variables that I, I don't want to hem us, hem us in, and that was kind of what was bothering me the last time.
Well, for example, you know, they want us to give them some more parameters and criteria requirements. Well, it depends on where it's located. It depends on the specific property, you know, I mean, some is going to, you know, something right up against, you know, a main road is going to need something different than something that's way out in the county and, you know. So that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Setbacks and stuff, right? Scale of operation, I mean.
We discussed that before. The scale of operation was going to be like limited hours and is that what they're?
Well, the scale of operation had more to do with the, with the primary use as secondary use, you know, that, to say that scale of operation with Mr. McLaughlin.
Have as, as sort logs.
Yes, as the prime, I think, I think that does take care of that particular comment. The scale of operation was referring to Mr. McLaughlin's example of he has a couple of logs on his property that, that there are for commercial, you know, potentially for commercial sorting and marketing, if you will.
And if somebody's timbering, they're going to stack logs before they hold them out. That's not a wood yard.
That's correct.
Lot size, I mean, I, I.
I don't see those constraints on any of the other categories, you know, of special exceptions. So I'm just wondering why, why the board wants us to put it on this one, you know, it's not on sawmills, it's not on.
Campgrounds, we've just approved one for the campground.
We're not going to say you can only have a 10 acre campground. So why would we want to constrain ourselves? None of the other categories have it unless there's.
There are some minimum lot size associated with different, but that's agricultural uses.
Junkyard says you can hold 30, but I mean, that's the only one I can see in this whole list of definitions that, that defines something that, that can spread.
So, so the new, I, I will only say it is, is a more common trend to have ordinances associated with particular uses than our current zoning ordinance does. So, so I don't want to utilize, I don't want to utilize the, the existing ordinance as a threshold to move forward because in, in some cases it is an adequate ordinance. And I don't think the minimum lot size, Mr. McLaughlin and I chatted about this prior to the meeting. And we chatted about, you know, at last month's meeting, it would not be a maximum, but it would be a minimum of, you know, let's, let's say for example, five acres or whatever you think the minimum lot size in an agricultural zoning district would be appropriate to have a wood yard in. Whether, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of, of smaller parcels, there's a fair amount of less than one acre parcels in the agricultural zone. Current lot size is obviously two acres, so we have a fair amount of two acre parcels in the agricultural zones. But then the question that is raised is, do, do y'all feel that it is appropriate to set a minimum lot size being X number of acres per acre?
So I guess the, the question on the lot size is ability to bring equipment in, trucks in, turn around.
And I think that a lot of it would be.
Logs there to make it commercially viable.
And I think a lot of it would be the ability to be self-contained, you know, own the property and be self-contained, very, very similar. They're, they're very similar to the discussion we have with, with wedding event venues.
I mean, they have to come up with if it's going to work on the property. They're not going to pick a two acre parcel if they can't, but you know, you know what I'm saying? Again, I,
I think it's very hard to try to limit what they can do, not depending on their size. I mean.
I was going to say topography makes a difference. You could have a 10 acre parcel that's not appropriate, it's not big enough to make it work, you know, it depends on how, how much of it's usable.
Because I was, I was making a comparison that, you know, telling the Cars Creek area is flat, but I mean, I live next to a gentleman that, his land that's across from me is, he owns a sawmill. I mean, he owns, he's North Fork. So, you know, for someone to come in and say they want to do something across from my house, I mean, the topography is totally different. They want to be over on the Cars Creek side. If you go to Fairfield, you know, it's, it's hard to limit that, you know, as far as, and I just use North Fork as an example, just for the fact that it is, it could potentially, you know, could potentially put something across from my house. And just thinking about the topography of it versus Cars Creek versus, you know, Fairfield, South River, things like that. So just, and it would be in the flood zone if it was right across from my house, so.
I think that's why we decided that we needed to leave it, you know, that we have to look at each individual application because the land is so different all over this county and, you know. That was why we didn't do that.
Why we didn't put a minimal to it, right? And think that we're going to put a minimal, yeah.
So in the flood zone, let's, let's take the discussion to flood zone. Flood zone could mean water seeping up versus a raging torrent. What are the Lomas and Lomers that, that could be addressed to?
So, so you, Rockbridge County has several different types of flood zones. We have zone AEs, which are hatch and unhatch. That's where engineered study has been performed. That's very limited of, of where we have zone AEs in, in Rockbridge County. It'd be parts of the Maury River, most of the South River, parts of Irish Creek, parts of Buffalo Creek, at some of the larger tributaries. When you get into the smaller creeks, such as Hayes Creek, Cars Creek, Walker's Creek, et cetera, you do not, I don't think any of those have a AE zone. And so it's an A-zone and that's all part of the 100 year floodplain. The A-zones are not engineered studies and so they have, I have seen large discrepancies of flooding on the ground versus what is actually in the flood zone, historically in the flood zone or, or, or physically in the flood zone. With that being said, there's a process that, that you're referring to as far as a Loma, which is a letter of map amendment, or a Lomer, which is a lap map of letter revision, I believe, that, that would require a surveyor, engineer or architect to do, work with FEMA, determine the base flood elevation. That would be a set elevation unique to that piece of property, that, that the subject property that the, that again, the surveyor, engineer and or architects are working with. And, and have a base flood determination determined and then therefore can have a more accurate map depicted of what is actually in the 100 year floodplain and what is outside the 100 year floodplain. In reality, you are in the 100 year floodplain if FEMA says you are in the 100 year floodplain. And so we have a mapped 100 year floodplain for Rockbridge County, just like other localities in the Commonwealth that show us what's currently in the 100 year floodplain or what is outside of the 100 year floodplain. There's another flood zone called X500, which is the 500 year floodplain that there are currently no building restrictions nor any zoning restrictions associated with the 500 year floodplain.
Yeah, I mean, I live on a creek and, you know, some, some years we're in the flood zone and, you know, we have to pay extra insurance. Other, other years we're not, you know, just depend, they changed, they changed it back and forth a few times, so.
That would depend on your insurance carrier. The, the effective date of the maps for our firm panels, which is, uh, what you refer to, the firm panels were effective on April 6th of the year 2000 and they have not changed since the 2000 date. However, we have also seen discrepancies with insurance and, and some, in some cases you're in and, and, and I've heard that before. I think it depends on your insurance carrier and, and how he or she is checking on the floodplain. I will say, generally speaking, when, when mortgage rates were, you know, interest rates were, were low, everything was seen to be in the floodplain unless determined otherwise. And we weekly, I'd say weekly, a couple of times a month, write floodplain determination letters, especially when the interest rates are, are low. You have people refinancing, you know, speaking when, when that comes back up.
Well, obviously we don't want a wood yard in an area where there's going to be torrential water coming through that can move boulders and cars and everything else. But if it's just something that seeps up.
By referring to seep up, do you mean seep up from the ground or?
No, no, just, just.
Creek.
Sometimes water backs up and you, you got these, you know, it's in trees and that sort of thing, but it's calm, it's not raging through and you get a little bit of a detritus line with that when it recedes back, but it's not moving big objects. There versus out in the current where, you know, huge boulders can be run and we've seen trees come down Walker's Creek, big trees. But that's a deposit that gets into our field and it loses its energy, drops the trees right there and from just, I'm just curious how we can, I mean, I, 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 I think there probably needs to be some wording on the flood. There's flooding and then there's flooding.
I think you got to prepare for the worst though. Yeah, and if it's in the 100 year floodplain, there's a chance it's going to be the torrential pulling boulders down and whatever. So we got to be, you know, assume that that could happen. So I guess my question is, could we say that if it's in the 100, 100 year floodplain, that they have an opportunity to work with FEMA, you know, to work with the Army Corps of Engineers, whatever, to come up with a plan? I mean, you know.
I'm sorry, what's that? I, I rusted chat.
That's okay. I was just saying, you know, if it is in the 100 year floodplain and we wanted to say, you know, we don't want to say, no, we're never going to do one in the 100 year floodplain. Could we give them an opportunity and say, unless you work with the Army Corps of Engineers and come up with a plan or, or, you know, or get a Loma or something?
If it was, if you did a Lomer, if you did a Loma or a Loma, it would be, it would be irrelevant because you would no longer be in the 100 year.
And that what Park Electric did to get their solar panels out of.
Yes, that, 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 that was a large Loma, if I recall, Perkins Dorison worked on that particular one and, and that was in the Cars Creek watershed, of course, as well.
Same watershed, right?
It was on, that was associated with Cars Creek itself, yes.
Yeah.
That you have to protect downstream waters from any damage to make it near your site. So if you're in a floodway where you didn't have velocity for the water, I don't think anybody can tell you that, that they can protect people downstream and you're a flood bridge. they can protect people downstream and you're a flood bridge.
Yeah, that's. So there, with that, we could have, with the flood, there would have to be some sort of letter of or some sort of study of or report of that this would not.
They're either marked in the floodway or they're not, right?
No, because, because what Chris was saying is the, the non-detailed studies don't have floodway flood bridge.
So how do you determine that? An engineer comes in and determines? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. So, no, you don't, but, but I think to, to answer your question, which kind of answers your question, if, if an engineer uh, proposes with a special exception, I've come up with a way to accomplish it, then there it is. Just because an engineer says with a special exception, well, this buffer is going to work perfectly. You guys don't have to accept it, of course. I mean, I can say it, but, but if, if someone comes up, if you're in a flood fringe and you come up with a way to, to accomplish it, then, then good, I think.
Is there a way to accomplish not damaging things downstream though, if you're in a floodway?
I think so. So with the log yard, we've got logs that, that would float at some but, but height of water. And we've been talking, I've talked to Chris and then I've talked to some of my associates that work in other jurisdictions and deal with this more. And yes, I think there is. Uh, it would involve some, probably some very strong fencing, speaking just specifically to the one that, that we're looking at, the, the water is fairly shallow. So I mean, but to, to come up here and say, yeah, when the water's twelve feet deep, we're going to keep the logs. It, it's not that. When the, when the water's too deep though, yes, we can. I think so. Uh, I'd at least like the opportunity to present that during a special exception, not to just have a rule valve.
I think they're gonna have to though, because you, it's just like we said earlier, it's like every demographic of the county is different.
Right. So if it's a special exception, we have to come and make our case.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think you can say blanket if it's in a hundred-year floodplain, we just say no.
I, I hope we don't do that. I'd like to have an opportunity individually to make the case.
And, and you, to, to clarify, you certainly have that ability and, and our draft solar ordinance, you, you've instructed us to do that.
And I think that's, that's the best use of our, our time and our ability as, as commissioners to utilize the land that we have in our county and let the landowners, you know, come to us with, with a plea or with a idea.
Oh, you're saying is that, oh, I'm sorry, that you already said that.
I, I was kind of comfortable.
Chris just. Oh, okay. All right. I got you. Yeah. I'm just saying it would be the best. Yeah. I would just say it's. So, yeah, I would just say it was the best use of our, our abilities as commissioners to have them come to us with.
But what Chris is saying is that we, we're looking at the solar ordinance and we're saying, no solar in hundred-year floodplains. So he's saying, what's the difference in saying no wood yards in a hundred-year floodplain? I mean, to me, the difference is metal and electric, you know.
Okay. So where do we go from here?
Well, if, if I can really quickly, just to touch on a couple of things that the commission has been talking about, I just want you to keep in mind that each engineer is going to be different, each planning commission is going to be different, each board of supervisors is going to be different. And consistency in planning is key. Just reiterate why we might want to put some restrictions on things. Um, and I think Chris mentioned, it's kind of common practice nowadays. Our, our ordinance compared to surrounding counties ordinances are very different. Um, they are, they are very, very vague. Yeah, they, they don't.
So is that something we need to look at? Like, do we need to go back and look at some ordinances from counties around?
No, that, that's, that's a top priority of ours and can be, we, we've started with a very, in, in some cases, an adequate ordinance, you know, and so I think we're up to, you know, Chris and I are talking about different items and we're probably up to like forties, yeah, thirties, forties that, that, that do need to be addressed for sure.
I guess my next question is, these surrounding counties all have woody gardens, I'm guessing. They have ordinances that deal with wood yards. You know, I'd be interested to see what some of those.
Majority are, are storage yards, I would say, rather than wood yards. Industrial storage yards.
Which would include wood yards.
Would could be interpreted to include wood yards.
And so these are all parameters that are in there that deal with the flood zone and minimum lot size and all that are in those ones that are in our surrounding.
Should we be looking at storage yards versus wood yards? Or do we want to say storage yard and have wood yards?
I think it's unique to, uh, I think it's unique to wood yards in this particular case. I, I, and I think what we're doing, what, what we are doing is piggybacking off of, uh, the sawmills being in, uh, used by special exception. Obviously, we're all, we're all aware that sawmills are required to have a associated, a successful sawmill is required to have a, uh, uh, a, a wood yard associated with it. So, so another point, uh, that I'd like to make that, that Russ pointed out is obviously, and I've sent this to y'all via email prior to the last month's public hearings, is section six oh eight point thirteen, uh, does have special exceptions and variances, additional factor, as additional factors be satisfied. And it's actually one through, uh, one through fourteen, excuse me, one through thirteen, uh, that, that highlight uh, what is required on, in the existing floodplain ordinance. Uh, and so, so if I, I briefly can go through there. Number one, uh, the danger of life and property due to the increased flood heights or velocity caused by the approachment.
Chris, can, is there any way you can put it? I mean, share your screen up. Just that helps me. I'm a visual person.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, again, section six oh eight point thirteen, uh, one through thirteen. Uh, number one is the danger of life and property due to, uh, increased flood heights or velocity caused by encroachments. No special exception variance shall be granted for any proposed use development or activity within the floodway district that will cause any increase of flood levels during the one hundred-year floodplain. Again, we've, we have very little, uh, comparatively speaking, most of our, most of our zoning, uh, most of our flood overlay district does not include the hierarchy of floodway and flood fringe. Uh, number two, the danger that materials may be swept onto other lands downstream to the injury of others. Uh, the proposed water supply and sanitation system and the ability of those systems prevent disease contamination unsatisfactory, unsanitary conditions, excuse me. Uh, number four, the subs- uh, sustainability, excuse me, of the proposed facility and its contents, the flood damage and the effect of such damage of individual owners, the importance of the services provided by the proposed, proposed facilities to the community, the requirements of the facility for a waterfront location, the ability for alternative locations not subject for flooding for the proposed use, uh, the capability of the proposed use, the capi- capability, capibil, sorry, can't talk this evening, of the proposed use with the existing development and development anticipated in the foreseeable future. The relationship of the proposed use of the comprehensive plan and floodplain management program for the area, safety of access to the property in time of flooding during ordinary and emergency vehicles. Uh, the expected heights, velocity, duration, rate of rise, sediment transport of the floodwaters expected at site. And number twelve, uh, such, such other factors that are relevant to the purpose of this ordinance, the Board of Zoning Appeals may refer the application, uh, and accompanying documentations, uh, pertaining to the request for a special exception or variance. In that case, it would be a variance in, in that particular case. So, so there are, there are obviously a, a, a number of provisions that, that, uh, that have to deal with special exceptions in the flood zone. Additional sat- satisfactors, additional s- uh, factors to be satisfied. With that being said, um, there, there are a couple of them that are going to be, uh, that, that could become problematic for this particular use in, in the flood zone. The, the availability of other properties would be one of them. Uh, the, the danger that materials be swept on other lands. Um, the, uh, the requirements for the facility to be at a waterfront location. Obviously, all of those would, would have to be, uh, addressed during the special exception. The, the purpose of the Board of Supervisors, uh, this discussion, April's discussion, September's discussion, and then the September twenty-seventh discussion with the Board of Supervisors are that if it is a common concern and the planning commission and or board of supervisors, if the planning commission would like to recommend to the board of supervisors or the board of supervisors does not want to see this particular use associated with the hundred-year floodplain, staff is stating that now is the appropriate time to address that. Um, and, and that is true also with other proposed uses. I mean, another one that, that was ref- ref- reference to in the Board of Supervisors meeting is a automobile graveyard, you know, so, so it would be highly unlikely that we approve a automobile graveyard in a flood zone, hundred-year flood zone whatsoever, but it's not flat out prohibited. Now, if we were doing that ordinance in twenty twenty-one, would we prohibit automobile graveyards in the hundred-year floodplain? I would, I would certainly suggest it. And so that was the, that was the direction that the plan, that the board of supervisors wanted the planning commission to further consider a, to further consider that if there is some uniformed concerns of having a wood yard in the hundred-year floodplain, now is the time to address.
Could we use floodway versus floodplain?
Uh, again, there's very limited floodway. Uh, in fact, I think it would be prohibited in the floodway currently. Uh, I, I.
Well, that's, I would agree. I, I'm just, but if it were in the hundred-year flood fringe.
You're saying this, I mean, you just said that they don't dist- they don't distinguish between those two.
There, there's very little bit of engineer, comparatively speaking, to the overall hundred-year floodplain in Rockbridge County, there's very little bit of detailed studies being a flood fringe and floodway. Again, that's only parts of the.
So you gotta assume it's a flood.
You would have to go through some sort of engineering.
I don't, does that, Russ, Russ is gonna be a better asset than myself. Do, do y'all determine the floodway or you just determine what's? It, it would take way more, I think it's correct statement, say, it would take way more engineering upstream and downstream to determine the floodway and flood fringe. Correct?
Yeah, I think that is correct. We both, you're exactly on it. When you look at a flooded river or a flooded stream, you see the water being conveyed in the middle and you, and the water next to you, you might even see something flowing up, right? Because the water is just kind of still in the, in the hydrolics and such that the, that where the, where the water is actually being conveyed. So it, it, it's a tough question, but we sure would like to.
So what are we trying to accomplish tonight? Are we trying to make a decision tonight?
Uh, we certainly need some direction from, from the planning commission. Yes, sir. I mean, this, this, this obviously, i- if, uh, there, there's very limited action we can take this evening because it's not a public hearing.
Right.
Can we request, um, information from surrounding counties of what, what they have as far as they could staff? Like you draft conditions, could you basically say these are what we recommend as?
When I said you even recommend, what are the other counties?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, like our neighboring counties are, are.
Absolutely. And we have that and we could, we could even provide that for you prior to next month's meeting to, for you to digest and continue the conversation. But we have most of that information.
So you just send it to us in an email?
Yeah, we've, we've done that, um, research in the past. I, I, I gave you a summary basically, but I can detail out, um, what each county is doing, uh, certainly.
So at the, uh, at the August planning commission, in your package, it included information from Augusta, Bedford, Rockingham, Bath, Albion, Nelson, Chanado, and Amherst, but they were very, uh, ten thousand square foot view uh, summaries of what they require as far as wood yards, storage yards, but we could certainly.
Those were about definitions.
Yeah, they weren't so much like a.
I didn't think it was like, you know, they're not allowed to be in hundred-year floodplain, they have to be five acre, you know.
They, they did not, they did not include the definitions, uh, but they, but they did, uh, uh, they did it. They didn't identify if it's a used by special exceptions, requirements for adequate, well, Augusta, let's, uh, this, for example, Augusta allowed by used by special exception agricultural zones, requires adequate screening and shielding from the view. Uh, business must be appropriate for the agricultural areas, uh, that requires frontage on the state maintained road. And there's, that, that, we reported that there's pro- they, they straight out prohibit it in the flood zone. And I actually have some additional information on that.
And I don't think they got that particularly, but there was another brief summation basically of my findings.
Okay, so, so maybe the, was it?
Yes, I get the sense that you guys want to say that, that no wood yards in, in floodways. I, I mean, I, I I get the sense that, that, that's what you want us to say, but I can't say that. I mean, you know, Augusta County is different from Rockbridge County. Like, like you said, um, you know, our topography is different, our flood zones are, are going to be different. I mean, Augusta's flatter. I mean, to get to the, to the mountains. Um, so just because one county does it one way doesn't mean it's the right, right thing for us. I understand it makes it easier for you all too. Somebody comes in and wants to do this, like, no, we've updated our zoning and, and you can't do it because of this, or you can do it because of this whole checklist. But I think the special exception process is still the way to go on this. And I don't know how we can say yes or no. We can or can't do it if it's in, if it's in a flood zone.
Because they may have an engineer who comes with a great plan.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, I don't know what the Board of Supervisors will say, but I would like them to reconsider it um, with, with further clarification on our position. If we could.
I was gonna say, my supervisor didn't call to ask why we, you know, didn't ask any questions and there's obviously a reason.
I will point out and go for it, Miss Huffman.
There was some discussion at the board meeting. Oh, at least one of the board members had watched the planning commission meeting and the discussion. And shortly before the motion was made, there was discussion about, we'd like to revisit this after the fact and, and actually do an ordinance that applies to this ti- this type of use. And, uh, I think I made the comment that it, I would suggest that you do it all at one time rather than piecemeal. And, um, so then that came up at the board meeting, that if the planning commission was interested in adding these additional regulations in an ordinance that applies to this use, that they would like for you to look at doing that now.
But we discussed it at length and came to the conclusion that, I mean, I know I went back and read it. I'm the one who said, yeah, I think we need to put more in there, but we as a group decided we didn't want to hamstrung anybody.
I didn't think that that was clear and I don't think the board thought that that was clear.
And I, I will add, I, I did report that the planning commission felt that it was appropriate to approve this and then come back at a later date and, and revisit their ordinance, because that was said.
They were operating under.
Gotcha.
And, and that was discussed. I mean, do you know, because, because I always checks and balances, go see the YouTube. And so it was discussed that the planning commission would approve this proposed draft amendment as it stands and then come back and do a, 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 a second try at it, if you will, of an ordinance that reviews some of these details. And my, my point at the time and my point now is that if now is the appropriate time to, to do this and piggybacking Ms. Huffman's comments of, of not piecemealing an application together. And, and again, we, we are staff and we're doing our best to be neutral on the subject. Uh, with that being said, we have heard from, from several people in the floodplain that have inquired of how this got this far. Of, of y'all are really going to, y'all, Rockbridge County, I should say, are really going to allow this use upstream in a hundred-year floodplain with, I would say, what I would consider legitimate concerns on how the logs are going to be taken in and out and then during high water events.
Okay.
So the position may be, I mean, it very well may be piggybacking on David Whitmore's comments, supervisor, Commissioner Member Whitmore's comments. The, the, the position of the commission very well may be that we are no longer interested in coming back and doing a supplemental ordinance, that we are, we are firm that we are going to handle this under the existing ordinance. I mean, that's, that, that, so what the, the board is, is referred this back to for further considerations. And so that, that's where we are. And that, that's the only thing that, that we are here to report. I mean, you know, is it a hard conversation for us staff to have those with the landowners? And I said at the meeting, this is, this is going to come up in, in every magisterial district we work with. I don't see anyone, uh, I, I would not foresee any downstream landowner in a bona fide hundred-year floodplain not to have reservations about having this particular use upstream from. not to have reservations about having this particular use upstream from them, whether, whether they're, they're a farm, a house, you know, whatever it may be. But, but that, it's, it's, it's back on y'all, you know, completely back on y'all on, on how you would like to proceed from here.
In this particular lot, I mean, this particular property, it's been commercial for a long time. I mean, commercial use basically, right? You know, with trucks coming and going and all that kind of stuff, right? I mean, I'm just thinking about what other commercial, you know, could you ever have a commercial endeavor in a property that's a 100-year floodplain? Like what else could you put there?
There's a lot, there, you could build houses in the 100-year floodplain. You could build garages. You could build accessory uses. I mean, there's a lot of.
Not commercial stuff, though.
It could be commercial if you, if you had a cottage industry. I mean, if you lived on the property, you know, and we're getting off. And, and that's the, that's the somewhat, that's a somewhat issue with this proposed process is because this, this, it's, we're really not talking about an individual piece of property, the elephant in the room.
No.
Property, but with that being said.
Forgot my, I guess my, my question would be is, you know, the use, I think of going back to where she is not so much for the elephant in the room, but the use of, of land in the 100-year floodplain. You know, you say like, you build houses and they can build cottages and things like that, but really can we build houses in 100-year floodplains?
Absolutely, yes.
So you just have to have a good enough insurance policy, basically.
But no, there's, there's all sorts of building permit requirements. You're required to get an elevation certificate. It's required to have flood vents. They're boosted up footers. You know, there, there's all sorts of things. And now in the, to back up, in the floodway, no, you cannot build dwellings in the floodway. With that being said, back to the 100-year floodplain, the non-floodway, absolutely, they're all, they're all buildable zones. And, and you are required to get an elevation certificate and your finished floor is required to be elevated one foot of, above the 100-year floodplain. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. And, and that would include, you could do commercial greenhouses. You, you could do.
Yeah. So I guess that's what I was asking is like, if, if, if property in the 100-year floodplain wasn't deemed for a wood yard, it was going to be deemed for like greenhouses, like you said, you, you can build those.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. And they, they have to be boosted, boosted up footers. They have to be floodproofed or allow the water to pass through with, with accessory structures.
I was gonna say, I could see like, just going right down. That's going to go on somebody's property too.
Downstream from that either, so.
Well, yeah. So I, I guess I, I guess I'm where I'm confused on that would be, okay, so if we did a greenhouse on, in a 100-year floodplain and the waterway was to go through there, that the same, the same concept of what, what is on that property is going to affect the downstream property.
But there's, if, and that's the whole, there are, there are building permit requirements that require it be built to a certain standard, a higher standard.
We can't, we can't require wood yards to have certain.
I don't know how you're going to allow water to pass through or you are going to elevate them. That, that's the two issues that, that we're, that we're.
Elevate the property?
It's very problematic to elevate the property outside the 100-year flood.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm going back and forth. Yeah, I think I was just coming back and forth with you to, to say, you know, all right, if we allow this, then how do we do this? How do we do, you know?
Right. That was my point about, it's a commercial thing now.
So does, when you say, because the, is there a depth on the 100-year floodplain? You're saying that, that people have to be a foot above?
And, and that varies. That, that certainly varies. In some cases it's elevated crawl space. In some cases it's a pole bounce.
Oh, okay.
So how do you, how do you find out what's a foot above? Is there a?
That's hiring an engineer and doing what's an elevator, considered an elevation certificate. And elevation certificates are required for all dwellings within the 100-year floodplain.
And can you say that again, Chris? That homes are, you cannot build a, a home in the floodway?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
I thought we didn't have definitions for floodway versus flood fringe.
What's that?
Floodway versus flood fringe. That's.
Yes.
Right on the creek.
Smaller creeks. Right, okay.
So, so again, just to review where we have floodways and floodways are zone AEs. It's the parts of the James River, parts of the Maury River, parts of South River, parts of Irish Creek, your larger, your larger creeks and rivers. So when you get to Cars Creek, Hayes Creek, all the tributaries, Walker's Creek, for example, Buffalo Creek has a very small stint of floodway associated with Zollman Pavilion. No idea how it got there. But you know, all of those do not have an engineered study. So it goes back to its 100-year floodplain. So they do not have floodway and flood fringe determined.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, if there were a way to determine through an engineered
Study.
Study, which obviously the, an applicant would have to.
And that's a tremendous, I mean, it is a significant expense to do a Loma. And I would not even, Russ would be a better candidate if, if someone would hire him to do a bona fide study to attempt to do a map of floodway and flood fringe, what that would entail. I, I've never, I've never seen.
On the smaller, on the larger, on the larger ones, not the smaller ones, correct?
What's that?
So I'm just going back to the, the floodways were, the AE were the James, the South River, the bigger, the river creeks. Okay. But then for the smaller creeks, say Buffalo, Hayes, Buffalo Creek, My House, Cars Creek, things like that, that's, there's no, it just says floodplain.
That's correct.
And to get it to where you'd have to do an engineered study to get it.
I've, I've never seen a private engineered study determine, and Russ, Russ is, is obviously the, the expert in the room. But I've never seen a private engineer determine floodway versus flood fringe on a unique piece of property. We've worked through, we've worked through hundreds of letter of map amendments throughout the years that I've been here.
Right.
And that's probably your correct statement, 800 at least, I would say, you know, 50 to 100, whatever it may be, 100 plus. But we have, I have never seen a private engineer determine floodways or flood fringes on a private piece of property.
Okay.
That's, that's done in.
So for instance, if they wanted, so they would for a piece of property to be able to construct solar panels like they did for Bark, they would do the Loma, Lomer.
They did a Loma, a letter of map amendment, if I recall correctly. Do you recall that?
They did it by a study.
They, they were low, I think it was a Loma, which is very similar, Loma, letter of map amendment, Lomer, letter of map provision. And so, so what, i- i- and then fill in the blanks here, Russ, but what I understand is the engineer survey architect will contact FEMA, request a base flood elevation, and then that base flood elevation is determined by FEMA. And then the surveyor, engineer, architect then can use that base flood elevation. And they have existing contours, existing topography of land, and then they can map the, the correct, a more
Okay.
engineer where the actual floodzone is. And, and we've done that up and down Cars Creek for, for several many projects.
Right.
The, the closest one, I don't even know if that's the closest one, but the one we talked about is the Bark project, obviously.
That's why, that's why I refer to them, because I knew that they had done one.
Yes.
I, I want to go back to what Mr. Whitmore said though, which is if we put, you know, if we say they're not allowing the 100-year floodplain, we are taking away any opportunity they have, even if they have an engineer, we're just saying, we don't care what your engineer says. We don't care if he says that you can do it and we've found a way to contain it.
Oh.
It's, you're done. Like you, you don't have an option to bring an engineer in. We are, basically if we do that, we're cutting off that option to bring an engineer that says, you know what? I do have a way to make this work on this property.
So yes, you're exactly correct on that notion. You could work with engineer, surveyor, architect to determine the Loma process and figure out what's in, what's out. But as far as, aside from that, absolutely.
Or I'm going to work with the Army Corps of Engineers and we're going to come up with a way to, to make it so it's not as impactful downstream or something. You're taking all that away if you say, we're never going to allow that. We're going to put it in the ordinance. You cannot have it in the 100-year flood.
Very, yes. And that's, that's what we've done in other.
In a 100-year floodplain, they have to have a letter of map amendment or a letter of map provision.
If that is, and then that would show what is actually in the 100-year floodplain or not. Because obviously it's been reported several many times that the A zones, and I'll say it, I mean, I work with on a day-to-day basis, we work on a day-to-day basis, that the A zones can be inaccurate. And, and not, not as, the AE zones, I think I might have seen one letter of map provision in an AE zone. But again, we've seen.
His point is though, you know, if, if they get a Loma or a Lomer, it's now not in the 100-year floodplain because they, you know, they've gotten it amended so that it takes it out of the 100-year.
If, if it's, if property is included in the 100-year floodplain in order to be able to proceed, then they would have to have a Loma or Lomer, have to, would have to show that it was, would not be impactful downstream.
It, it would show that it's not in the 100-year floodplain. It would determine what is on the 100-year floodplain and what's not in the 100-year floodplain.
Okay. That, that helps me a little bit. So I, I think what I'm hearing from you all is that we'd like to see what other others are doing. And I'm also interested in setbacks, setbacks from roads, setbacks from other properties, setbacks from wet areas.
Well, and I guess I would like to see suggestions from you. Our area is not, like you said, like other areas. So maybe we just don't have to just look at those. Maybe they have suggestions, you know, staff has suggestions of what you think for our area is appropriate for conditions. You know, for part of this ordinance. You know, the screening thing, I mean, I think that's good. You know, I mean, there's definitely some things you read in there which you guys can, you know, pull from. But some of them are not appropriate for our area.
So I'm cleared to, you talked about a buffer earlier and you said you were adverse to requiring a buffer. Now you, you would like to.
Well, I'm just saying, that's an example of, you know, I, I think that's something we have to look at. It depends on where it is, you know? I mean, that's what we were saying, you know, if it's right on the road, yes, you want screening, but do you really need screening if it's, you know, out in the county 10 miles and, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I think that the one I was speaking about was if it's on a main road, you know, or if it's on a whatever, you know, it talks about the road and how it needed to be screened from major roads and things like that.
Russ is requesting that we pull up the GIS aerial photo of the site we're talking about.
Just, yeah, that's the elephant in the room, so it's.
Is it just me? I'm usually freezing. That's why I was.
All right. So just happened to be, weirdly enough, I happen to be in the Murrah Road area that has floodplain associated with it. And more ironically, it has Deegan Sawmill located here. No, sir.
No. It's more like the 10,000-year.
That is on top of a hill.
Exactly.
That, that is on top of a hill there.
I don't know, but if.
Well, outside, but that, that is somewhat ironic. I was just in the, I was on that intersection. I was on that intersection earlier today looking at a. So with that being said.
And while Chris is pulling this up, I just want to make sure that, that we're right when I go ahead and draft something for you guys next month, but the board had requested floodplain minimum acreage size, which the Commission does not want to touch, minimum acreage size, is that correct?
I don't think so, no.
No.
Buffer requirements we talked about, and then scale, which we believe is going to be covered by definite, a change in definition.
Right. So again, go back to this floodplain. It's either we want to include it or we don't. Or it's yes or no, or flood, floodway, flood fringe. You know, what is it?
I think it's yes or no, honestly, because there's too many, we don't, there's no flood fringe out here even to.
I think we have to go with the special reception process to handle these case by case basis.
Right there.
So I, I would say that.
The only, the only thing that now makes me take, the only thing that makes me pause on that though is that, you know, what you read, which are those 12 things, which one of them is, if it's impacting downstream. And I'm saying again, in the special exception, isn't that where the engineer comes up with a plan to figure out how you can keep it from impacting?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is Route 68. This is a great commercial site. Great commercial site that the heirs want to sell to another person that wants to productively use this property. I know it's going to flood, but I know that's not ideal. But gosh, look at that. That's, that's a commercial site.
Uh, no, sir. The blue is Cars Creek in this area. How wide is Cars Creek?
Can you put them?
Is, is going to be here. It's a.
Wow, yeah. I mean, the whole thing, it's not part of it.
And that would be the, that's exactly what the Planning Commission is discussing during a, a formal letter of map amendment to determine how accurate this particular floodplain is. The mapping, is that? And that's exactly what, what, what we've chatted about.
Right.
Can you take the floodway off? I mean, talking about this specific property, I mean, in there a buffer on the creek. So you're not, you're not putting your logs right up to the water's edge, so.
Well, so, so that's another, so, so this is, that has no floodway, you, you know, this is the 100-year floodplain and, and.
Right, but it's not.
He wants to take that off and see where the logs are going to be.
Differentiating between, you know, swiftly moving water and water that's slowly backing you up and receding versus the little side tributary that, that would be a flash.
Well, in fact, this, this is, this is inaccurate because in, in the tax map is inaccurate, there's an unrecorded new survey that, that was included in y'all's package and, and I can pull it up if needed. But they do not own, the heirs do not own to the creek.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the side.
It's actually, if, if I may.
A 40-foot sliver of creek frontage in this particular area. I can only assume it was for water purposes, cattle, you know, that type of thing. But they only own a 40-foot sliver of here, 40, 40-foot sliver right in this area, could be this area. And then the property line is very close, very close to.
This particular building that is shown here. This particular building is, is, is very close to the property line. And I have that survey. Y'all, y'all have that survey as well.
Do you have, do you have topper lines?
Oh, look at you.
I'm north and south backwards here. Two foot, four foot. So in the area where the logs would be stored would be between the 1,200 and the 1,202, is that correct?
That's more or less. The area is 1,200. And for reference, that is a building. 1,200, that's what we've met out there, my heirs said. It is 92. That's the last cut of base, so we have 92. They got stories of water in there. So you kind of think that 1,200, you'd be in the, the, the heat of 1975.
So being in the floodplain means it's a 1% chance per year that you will be flooded. Of course, we, we, we know that we've had a handful of, of 100-year storm events since 9, since 85. I would say that's probably about right.
I think this just kind of reaffirms what you. I think this just kind of reaffirms what you said, which is it's a case by case basis, based on what the property is and what historically we see there. You know, I mean, if that got four inches in nineteen ninety two, you know, has it ever flooded all the way up and, you know, up to that twelve hundred?
Did it ever reach the Route sixty or?
I would, I would say that's the 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 question we want to ask for FEMA, not necessarily the current landowner or future landowner. Uh, I would, I I would suggest that would be part of the the determine the letter of map revision to determine the base flood elevation and and see what is actually mapped. Do you disagree? Uh, yeah, in the world of ironic, I I told Mr. McLaughlin, Chairman McLaughlin, let's avoid talking about the particular site during during this discussion.
I think, but I think it comes back right back to the, well, I'm just thinking it goes right back to the point of, of, well, I'm just, I I keep referring back to this one and being very similar. I just think the lay of the land is there, if you were to pull the property up right across from my house and knowing Will Harris that owns the property across from my house that owns North Fork, you know, it's very possible that he could do the same thing across from my house. And so, you know, how would, how would I look at that property as I'm doing this property? Granted, it's not commercial right now. It's all agricultural, but as far as flooding and and downstream and and things like that. So I I'm trying to compare two different, I I was raised in this side and I live on the other side. So, you know, I kind of I know known the property, so just, but then I can compare it to Fairfield is the same, you know, the same instance. If there was an area down at South River, which you said was part of the floodway anyways, it would be totally different.
Most of South River is an engineered way, absolutely.
Exactly. So we couldn't really compare that one.
And so if we put this ordinance and we made one of the things, you know, can't be in a hundred year floodplain again, somebody would be like, oh, well, that's out. And they wouldn't even think about getting a Loma or a Lomer or going to FEMA, right? I mean, to make that work.
Surprised the number of uh, uh, homeowners that that work with surveyor engineers to to get out of, to do the Loma process. I mean.
I've been a part of a couple of them.
Yeah, and so I don't think it's uncommon for especially, you know, a business owner to to know about.
So can we not put it in there to say, uh, not able to locate in the hundred year floodplain unless brought proposal of Loma, Lomer, or whatever?
But what he's saying, though, is it, would you get a Lomer, a Lomer?
I don't know. I went to buy a piece of property and they said it was in the hundred year floodplain, so I just niched the idea about ten years ago because I didn't know there was an option to, you know, propose that. So I just niched the idea altogether that I was going to even buy the property because I knew it was going to be in the floodplain. But I knew the house even three weeks ago, two weeks ago, whatever, it was flooded and I said, there's never been a water in that dang on house. I should have bought that house and, you know, went with the idea, but I would have known just right back then that there was such thing as that. I'm just saying.
Okay, I think we're going around in circles right now, so I think let staff get some ideas together.
And we can certainly email those to you, you know, I I won't say this week because it's not going to happen, but you know, or I would say it's achievable next week to to put that together and email it to you. Then and then continue this discussion and and I'll do my best to keep everyone up to date on on the nature of the discussion.
I think we need to talk to our supervisors as well, get some direction from them as well.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Okay. Any other? Business?
I make a motion that we dismiss the jury. A second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.